Hello, I'm Jay Jay May Bay with Lodi and Moore's Parade, Monta Calla Ron. The acronym is AIPAC on the chief judge across the court. Today is Class 139, Class 139. What did we learn in Class 138? Well, the bottom line is this. The Moors are not Indians. And black people are not Indians, right? So in Class 138, instead of just saying we're not Indians, what do we do? We use reference points, but what type of reference points? Well, we use treaties, right, as our legal argument to be able to prove that we as a people, the quote-unquote copper-colored people are not Indians. Because the treaties of the Cherokees, right, the Creeks, the Seminoles, right, the Chickataw, Choctaw, et cetera, right, Chickasaw. It clearly states in those treaties that the freedmen, i.e. the Negroes, who are really Moors, were being adopted. The word "adopted" is everywhere in these treaties, right? Now does it make sense now, when we took a look at the treaties, these 1866 treaties, which is Supreme Law of the Land, right, so between the United States of America and the five civilized tribes, they signed those treaties, which became the Supreme Law of the Land between those two contracting parties. Between those two contracting parties, right, was the Indian reservations in the United States of America, they agreed in 1866 that the Moors would be adopted as citizens of the five civilized tribes. So that was the first treaty language, right? And then the United States turned around in the year 1904, right? In 1904, the federal government had a case where they started to talk about the Choctaw and the Chickasaw Nation in terms of how to deal with these Moors who had been adopted, right? So from 1904, now we fast forward to the year 2022. Now you see why Maxine Waters, right, when she was talking to the Senate of the United States, why she was talking about the fact that the freedmen were adopted, right? And we went over that document showing Maxine Waters. This is why she knows that the freedmen were adopted as so-called Indian citizens. It's because she went back and looked at what? The treaties. So therefore, if you hear anybody saying, "Okay, oh, we Indians." Okay, tell them to pull out the treaties and prove that you're an Indian, and they can't prove it. Nobody copper-colored can prove that they're Indians. Keep in mind, the word "Indian" is a misnomer. It's a nom de guerre. It was applied to us, but we're not Indians. But what the Moors have to understand is, did we have tribes over here? Absolutely. Before the world started using this word called "state," the word that everybody used was basically the word "tribe," right? Before the modern law came into place to use the word "state." So yes, we as Moors had tribes, but we were never Indians at any point in history. And this is what we have to take away from Class 138. We look up the word "Moore" in an etymology dictionary, right? We look up the word "black" in an etymology dictionary, and all these things keep pointing to the fact that we're Moors. So what we take away from Class 138 amongst many things, the bottom line is, we are not Indians, and unfortunately, I hate to tell you, but nor are we Moorish Americans. Because Moorish American is a hybrid. You can't say you're Moorish and American, because Moorish means Moroccan. You can't say you're Moroccan-American and put a hyphen in it and add it together. That's like LeBron James saying he's playing for the Lakers Cavaliers. Where he can only play on one team at a time, he has to choose between these two teams, Cavaliers or Lakers. But Moorish American is a hybrid. It's a compound adjective. It is not a nationality. Indian is an adjective. It's not a nationality. Black is an adjective. It's not a nationality. However, when you read treaties like in Class 138, they start to say the nationality out loud. They will say Creek, right, Cherokee, Semino, right, Choctaw, Chickasaw. Those are nationalities of their reservation. So therefore, their state is called Cherokee, so therefore, the people are Cherokees, right? When you start around and say you're Moorish-American, okay, tell me the name of the state. You're trying to say you've got a state called Moorish-America? There's no such thing as a Moorish-America state. Therefore, Moorish-American cannot be a nationality. Also, we learned in Class 138, in that class, we showed videos of people that were stateless trying to get what? A state to recognize them. See, it's not what your mouth says. It's not what your frivolous paperwork says that you got from Army Bay Publications. Army Bay Publications is not a state. It makes no difference what card you got from your temple that don't give you no state recognition. We gotta start telling the truth. So what we gotta understand is, the treaties, our Moorish treaties, keep referring to us as Moroccans, but they also refer to us as Moors. The word "Moors" is a noun, and "Moroccan" is a noun. But both "Moore" and "Moroccan" are the same words, because "Moore" is abbreviation of "Moroccan." And "Moroccan" represents the state. What's the name of the state? Morocco. So this is what we have to understand. We have to start to understand, only the state can recognize your nationality. If you can't prove that a state recognizes you, then I hate to tell you, but either you're a fraud, or you're just simply stateless. Just like the young lady in Class 138 who had Syrian blood. She was born in Lebanon, but Brazil ended up recognizing her and giving her state recognition. But she couldn't go around telling everybody, "Yeah, I'm Lebanese. I'm Lebanese." She couldn't say she was Lebanese, because she couldn't prove it. The Lebanon did not recognize her as Lebanese. She couldn't go back to Syria. Syria wouldn't recognize her. Why? Because her parents had an intermarriage where somebody was Muslim, somebody was Christian. Their laws would not allow these two religions to be married. So Syria wouldn't recognize the child that was born between two Syrian parents. Their nationality could not be transferred to the three children that that married couple had. So Syria wouldn't recognize the children. The children end up becoming stateless, even though their bloodline was Syrian. They were born in Lebanon, but recognized by Brazil. You see? So it's all about the recognition from the state. And this is what Moorish-Americans have to understand. Tell me the name of the state that recognizes you, where your name is on the registration of a state. You claiming the United States of the United States? Okay, then tell me the name of the state that recognizes you, and it doesn't exist. You saying you're Indian? Okay, prove it. Tell me the name of the quote-unquote "Indian tribe" that recognizes you. And I'm not talking about some tribe you made up on your own. I'm talking about a tribe that the United States of America recognizes. You just can't make up your own tribe? It's about treaty law. The treaties recognize the tribes. You gotta be a national upset tribe. This is what we have to understand from Class 138, right? Now, I wanted to also address something else, that, you know, I'm hearing these little rumors going around that says, "Well, Jay Bay is going in on Dr. G." Well, that's an absolute lie. Let's just put that to rest right now. No matter what people say, that's a lie, because if you take the time to listen to Class 137, it was two and a half hours of content. If you listen to Class 138, it was three hours of content. That's five and a half hours of content, and you can't pull up one clip where it says that Jay Bay was going in on Dr. G. The whole time, I'm talking to Dr. G to tell her what's going on around her, to give her irredition about information that she may not be aware of. So this must be understood. The last two classes, Class 137 and 138, is about irredition. And today's class won't be no different. Today will be Part Three, Talking to Dr. G. Why do I say that? Because Dr. G has a seminar coming up from April 26 through the 28. So you've got April 26, 27, 28. That's a three-day seminar. So therefore, I'm gonna do a three-part seminar myself. Today will be the last day that we talk directly to Dr. G. Now, I have a lot of respect for Dr. G. Let me tell you why. And have some patience with me with my introduction today. I have a lot of respect for Dr. G and the House of Reawakening Minds. See, I take that name literally. So it's a house of reawakening minds? So I'm taking the time to try to help Dr. G to re-awake her, right? Because good brother Abdullah Il-Talib Mosi Bay said he was miseducated for 25 years. So if Abdullah was miseducated for 25 years, that means that Dr. G was also miseducated for the 13 years that she's been studying. So I'm trying to show my appreciation to Dr. G and the House of Reawakening Minds, because it's her house. She has a lot of guest speakers that come on there, but that's Dr. G's show. So therefore, it's a high probability she's been miseducated. I feel as though it's my obligation to share information with her, because she put a call to action out. She said, "We gotta unite." Well, how do we unite? And we got misinformation, right? Miseducation. And Abdullah said it best. He said, "I've miseducated thousands of Moors for 25 years." That's what he said. So it's an obligation for me to talk to Dr. G, because that's kind of sort of where I started with my classes. I started watching the House of Reawakening Minds. And I woke up. I'm awake now. I had to go back and do the research. Tajree Bay kept saying, "Don't believe me, go do the research." So I went and did the research. So I'm taking it upon myself to do two things. Let me tell you two things that I tried to achieve in Class 137 and 138. The first thing is this, to talk directly to Dr. G and say, "Dr. G, basically what Abdullah said, if all the Moors are miseducated, then okay, what is it that we should have learned?" So I tried to share information with Dr. G to let her know, because Dr. G is sitting there as a moderator, right? She's always a moderator, right? And she's got a panel coming up of about five people that's gonna sit there on the panel. She's a moderator. But as a moderator, she should have at least a basic fundamental understanding of what everybody in the room is sharing in terms of information. I wanted Dr. G to be able to use some discernment to understand what Taj's bringing to the table, what is Red Burr bringing to the table, what is Abdullah bringing to the table, mainly those three. Now, Dr. G, if she has watched the five and a half hours worth of classes, now she knows what's going on with Moorish-Americans and Indians. She'll know what Abdullah's bringing to the table regarding Moroccan law and international law. She should understand the fundamentals. But no one's teaching her the fundamentals, right? So that's what I'm trying to do, teach her the fundamentals, because Abdullah said he was miseducated. Okay, let's teach Dr. G what she might have not learned in the past 13 years. So within five and a half hours, I'm trying to make up for 13 years of information she didn't know. Okay, what's Part Two? What's another reason why I'm sharing all this information on Class 137 and 138? And I'm talking directly to Dr. G. You see, Dr. G, you gotta understand something. In the year 2018, I came into the Moorish-American movement. I was a black man. I was a proud black man. I came from the black culture. All of us started off as proud black people. If you call yourself Moorish-American, you used to call yourself black. You call yourself Indian, you used to call yourself black. So we all come from a black culture. We were raised in a black household. So me, in 2018, I bumped into Moorish-American classes of Tajree Bay and the House of Reawakening Minds, et cetera. So I started studying the Moorish-American movement. As I kept studying over the couple of years, 2018, 2019, going into 2020, I started realizing, uh, this stuff is not adding up. As a black man trying to transition and becoming a Moorish-American, because I was transitioning from black man to Moorish-American, I was trying to do the research. So in the year 2020, I started reading over the Rights of Indigenous People of 2007. I started reading over the Vienna Convention on the Law of Treaties of 1969. I started reading over the case of Mike Gertz versus Oklahoma of the year 2020, August 2020. That was an Indian case of Supreme Court between Mike Gertz, who was an Indian, versus Oklahoma, right? So I was studying these things, and I'm starting to say, "Well, if we're Moorish-Americans and we got a government, then where's the government?" You see, Dr. G, when I first came to the movement, there was no AIPAC study session. The only thing I could study was from a concept of being either a Moorish-American of a temple or a Moorish-American of civic organization. Those are the only options I had. And I found out that after studying some international law in the year 2020, I started realizing, I kept saying, "Well, where's our government?" And then around July of 2020, I was introduced to the consulate, the Moorish-American consulate. And I was like, "Okay, you claiming to be a government." I said, "But a consulate is an extension of a government. So where's the government? The government's the hub. The consulate is a spoke." So where's the government? So, you know, the hearsay was getting back to me saying, "Don't worry about that. We have a government. It's called the MAC." And I kept saying that, "Well, that doesn't make sense." So I kept studying, and I started realizing, "We in the absence of a government, Dr. G." So as I kept studying international law, next you know, I heard to the grapevine that Abdullah Il-Talib Mosi Bay was trying to quote-unquote "open the government up again," right? He called it United Republic of Him, right, Shim, Malachi Bay, Tamara. So I said, "Okay, that's what's up." I said, "Because we need a government." I knew that, Dr. G. I was already studying things such as, like I said, the Vienna Convention on the Law of Treaties of 1969. When I was studying it, Dr. G, you know how many times the word "state" is mentioned in the Vienna Convention on the Law of Treaties of 1969? It's mentioned 225 times out of 85 articles. Eighty-five articles, and the word "state" is mentioned 225 times. So what does that tell you the purpose and intent of the Law of Treaties? That means that only states could enforce treaties, you see? When I was reading over the Declaration of the Rights of Indigenous People of the year 2007, I realized the word "state" was in that instrument 41 times. The word "state" is mentioned out of 46 articles. It says the rights of indigenous people. You know how many times the word "people" is mentioned? 109 times out of 46 articles. So I realized this thing was about states and people, that the people can only be recognized by a state. The state must recognize the people. That's what the rights of indigenous people was about. What was the right for you to establish a state? Well, who had to establish a state? The people established a state, and then the state turned around and recognized those very people under the nationality of said state. So you gotta understand, Dr. G, when I study these international documents, I'm looking for the purpose and intent of these documents. And I realized that the Moorish-Americans wasn't teaching statehood. And as I started to work with Abdullah and Shim and Tamara, I started realizing that even though they was talking statehood, and mainly good brother Abdullah, they really wasn't trying to bring it all the way home. They were kind of just pinching it off a little bit, just pinching it off a little bit. But I was studying day and night. I got to a point, uh, Dr. G, I actually came to your building, uh, I think that's in Philadelphia, the House of Reawakening Minds. I was at your commercial building, meeting with Abdullah, Shim, and Tamara, and I had a good conversation with them. And I had an opportunity to go up on the stage and ask a question, because Abdullah had said this word called "third state." He mentioned the Vienna Convention on the Law of Treaties of 1969. Abdullah mentioned this word called "third state." I said, "Oh, Abdullah been studying the Vienna Convention on the Law of Treaties." So I couldn't wait. I wanted to get up there and ask a question about third states. I got up on the stage, and I said, "Uh, I wanna ask about third states." Well, Abdullah turned around and deferred to Shim. Abdullah disappeared to the back of the room. Shim was left there to just tell me what his interpretation of third state was. So he started doing his thunderclap thing. You know how he do, right? He didn't answer the question. So after he said what he said, I said, "Okay, thank you." And I said, "I just kind of just went back down the step, and I went and sat down." And Abdullah's like, "Did we answer your question about third states?" And I said, "Uh, no, not really." He said, "Well, come back on up here. We'll try it again." So I walked back up the steps. Dr. G, you know how you got the steps in your building? Asked the question again. I was like, I said, "Uh, we in Moor states," because Abdullah was teaching about we need to come together and create these states. So I asked him about third states again, because you gotta understand, third states in the Vienna Convention on the Law of Treaties, Article 2, it talks about third states. It talks about contracting states. It talks about negotiating states. So when Abdullah mentioned the word "third state," I was like, "Oh, well, let me ask him, are we as Moor states coming in as third states?" When I asked the question, Abdullah never wanted to answer the question, and Shim didn't know the answer either. So when Shim tried to answer the second time, I realized he didn't really know the answer. So I went and sat back down, but I didn't make a big fuss out of it, Dr. G. But I realized right then and there, I had already been starting to study things that potentially other people didn't know the answer to. So later down the road, Dr. G, and I thank you for your patience, let me explain this to you a little bit about my background and overview, what led me to this point of even talking to you directly through AIPAC study session. As I started to work with Abdullah, and keep it in mind, Abdullah was charging $300 for a 12-week course. And we were meeting once a week for United Republic of. But I was teaching the Moors of our study group in what was, at the time, it was the state of Colorado, right? So we was in the jurisdiction of the state of Colorado. We was still a political group forming. We wasn't AIPAC just yet. I started asking questions, and nobody would answer my questions. So shortly thereafter, AIPAC had its public inauguration. We signed our constitution, et cetera. We went to go meet with Abdullah, Shim, and Tamara. And when we got there, Dr. G, Abdullah had put out a call to say, "Everybody needs to come with their constitution, flag, and seal. Only send your state representative. That was the only way you could come." So AIPAC got there, and guess what? When we got there, nobody else there had their flag, seal, and constitution, not even Abdullah. AIPAC was the only ones who had checked the boxes regarding statehood. And that was fine. We didn't trip about it, but trust me, AIPAC was like, "Well, we flew all the way there, and there was other people in the room, but they wasn't representative of the state. They hadn't even, they had no constitution, flag, and seal. But we didn't trip." Anyway, uh, Dr. G, long story short, I started asking more questions to Abdullah and Shim and Chandler who'd be in the room, and unfortunately, good brother Abdullah couldn't answer my questions, and Shim would tell Abdullah, like, "Yeah, you know, Jay, he got it. He got it. He get it. He get it." Right? But for some reason, the energy wasn't right between me and Abdullah. He recognized I had been studying my behind all. See, when Abdullah didn't know, I was teaching three classes a week, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Sundays about international law already to AIPAC. So I had started getting a good handle on it. Well, long story short, AIPAC broke off from Abdullah, because Abdullah, like I said, he just wanted to pinch it. He wanted everybody to purchase liberty. And we wasn't gonna keep paying for it, especially since I was already teaching AIPAC more information than what Abdullah was sharing. Why am I saying this to you, Dr. G? You gotta understand, when I first came to this movement, nobody was teaching international law. Nobody. And then the one person that tried to teach international law was Abdullah. They wanted to charge you to learn about liberation, and even then, they wasn't teaching everything that I come to learn on my own. I learned a lot of information on my own, Dr. G. And what I'm trying to say to you is this, Dr. G. You see, I'm trying to make sure black people don't come into this movement, because someone told them they're Moorish-American. You see, when I came in the movement, there was no AIPAC study session to help me understand my options. There was no AIPAC study session to tell me about international law. I'm trying to make sure that black people, because I love black people, because I used to be black. Dr. G, so was you. So was Kujo. So was Taj. Tajree Bay used to be a black man, because he was at the Nation of Islam. Everybody in Nation of Islam, since he said he was one of their higher-ranking people, he was running around calling himself black at one time as well. So we all come from a black culture, and I'm trying to make sure that black people, when they come in, that they know the distinction between who's Moorish-American, right? What's the temple Moors about? What's the civic Moors about? Are we Indians? Are we Moroccans? I wanna make sure that when black people come in, Dr. G, that they don't fall for the same banana in the tailpipe that I fell for, because when I came in the movement, all the thing people did was sell me packages. Packages, packages, and more packages. That's all it was. The Moorish-American movement is number the commercial enterprise, and that's the truth, Dr. G. Everything's for sale, but there is no true liberation involved with it. Now you got black people selling we Indians. Once again, it's starting all over. These black people claiming they're Indians, and you know what they're doing? Selling packages, the same thing the Moorish-Americans were doing. So I wanted to take the time, Dr. G, to let you know that I'm letting the black people know the truth, babies. We as adults need and deserve options, Dr. G. I wish in 2018 and 2019, when I started studying, I had more options to study. If there was an AIPAC study session in 2018, chances are, I'd have never, ever signed up to be a Moorish-American. And I'm glad right now I'm teaching about the fact we're not Indians, because let me tell you something, Dr. G, the Moorish-Americans have done a terrible job explaining to the masses of people why it is that Moors are not Indians. They never took the time to show the treaties to the Moors. You know why the Moorish-Americans didn't disclose the Indian treaties? It's because Moorish-Americans themselves don't study treaties. The Moorish-Americans don't study the Treaty of Madrid of 1880. They don't study the Act of Saris of 1906. They haven't studied the 1856 treaty between the Sultan and Great Britain. They don't study France versus United States of America of 1952, which is an International Court of Justice case regarding our Moorish treaties. So the reason why the Moorish-Americans could never tell black people they were not Indians is because the Moorish-American leadership never taught the Moors on how to interpret our multiple treaties. They never knew about the treaties, because Moorish-Americans aren't taught to understand treaties other than treaty of peace and friendship, and they got misconceptions about that too. So, Dr. G, I just want to let you know that I respect you a lot. I feel terrible if in fact you've been miseducated for 13 years. I mean, you wasted a lot of time. But one thing I refuse to do, Dr. G, is not tell my truth. The More deserve to know the truth, Dr. G. You deserve to know the truth, Dr. G. All the Moorish-Americans deserve to know the truth. Black people deserve to know the truth. Moorish-Americans deserve to know the truth. People who think they're Indians and they're copper-colored, they deserve to know the truth. And I'm gonna keep speaking my truth, Dr. G, and hopefully this AIPAC study session as an educational platform will reach the masses of people in due time before they turn around and get some fake frivolous documents, some fraud paperwork from Army Bay Publications. I hope my message gets out to the black people before they turn around and start saying they're Indians riding around with feathers on, and the cops pull them over, they're gonna say, "I got tribal rights." You know what's gonna happen next, Dr. G? Check this out. You're about to start seeing our people with feathers on sitting up in court. And they're gonna be trying to tell the courts, "You don't have jurisdiction over me, because I'm an Indian." And they're gonna get locked up and sent to jail, the same way the Moors was. The Moors sitting there with feathers on, talking about, "You don't have jurisdiction over me, because I'm Moorish-American," and they're going right to jail. You're gonna have people with feathers on squatting in your house, talking about, "This my house. This my land, because I'm Indian." They're gonna go right to jail. So feathers and feathers, you're gonna go right to jail, because these misconceptions, all this propaganda, right? Now, keep in mind, Dr. G, I use the word propaganda a lot in Class 137 and 138. Today, you wanna find out why I use that word propaganda as often as I do, because it's an obligation of states to prevent propaganda, all right? So as I start to end my introduction, I just wanted to talk directly to you, Dr. G. Like I said, today is the last class. Since you're doing your class or your seminar from April 26 through the 28, so it's April 26, 27, 28, that's three days of a seminar. So I figured I would do three days as well, right? So Class 137, 138, 139, that's my three-day seminar. Then I'm gonna be done with it, Dr. G, and I'll pick this back up after April 28, right? To see what exactly came out of your seminar, right, your three-day seminar, hopefully you will discuss a lot of what I talked about in Classes 137 through 139, right? So with that being said, Dr. G, hopefully one of these days, we'll have an opportunity to talk, because as Abdullah has said, we all been miseducated, and it's time Uh, because as Abdullah has said, we've all been miseducated, and it's time for us now to get back on the yellow brick road, all right? To, to do what? Decolonize. Right? The Moors kept saying, nationality is the order of the day. No, they need to change that. Decolonization is the order of the day, all right? Okay, Dr. G, let's get into the class. As you know, I always open up the Constitution, the Constitution is paramount. Uh, the Constitution allows for, for the, to, to create a state, right? So the Constitution is what establishes the state. That way, the Constitution now dictates and determine who now is a national upset state. So now, the Constitution allows the government officials of the state to start to recognize people to return back to a Moroccan government, as we learned in Treaty of Madrid, Article fifteen, right? Treaty of Madrid of July third, eighteen eighty. Article fifteen, paragraph one says the Moors have an obligation to return to Morocco. Well, what about Morocco? We have to return to the Empire Morocco. Well, what about the Empire Morocco? Well, Empire Morocco had what at the time? A government. Now, there's no more empire government after March second, nineteen fifty-six. So the Moors have an obligation to restore it, right? To emerge as a sovereign, independent state. That was our obligation after nineteen fifty-six, but we never did it for some reason. The Moors Americans don't teach international law. And that was the cure the whole time, right? But under what concept? The concept should have been what? The order of the day should have been what? Decolonization. Right? So the Constitution allows you to be recognized by the state as being what? Moroccan. And that's why the Constitution is so important, Dr. G. All right? All right, so check this out. So you know, you, you've got your, um, you got your, you got your seminar coming up. The way I see this, Dr. G, because this is your House of Reawakening Minds, in my opinion, you're like a moderator, right? You're sitting in the middle, allowing people on your panel to discuss these initiatives, right, on so-called how to unite. But the question is, unite under what jurisdiction? Right? Jurisdiction means what? State. So what, how are we uniting under a state? How many states is it going to be? Because right now, taking a look at the board, you got the United States of America, that's a state. Let's say the Cherokee Nation, that's a state. Then you got the Empire Morocco, that's a state. That's three different states. So we're gonna unite, the question is, under what state umbrella? We already found out in class one thirty-seven, one thirty-eight, we're not Indians. Right? At the same time, we're not Moors Americans, because Moors Americans are still citizens of the United States. They've been adopted from being Moroccans to now being Americans. And everybody's trying to get out the jurisdiction, United States of America. Well, if you, if you're not Indian, and you wanna get out the jurisdiction, United States of America, then by a process of elimination, all that's left now is the Empire Morocco, Dr. G. This is what everybody don't understand. You can't keep running around telling them I'm a Moors American, you still stuck over here in that jurisdiction, United States of America. So, under a process of elimination, there's nothing left, Dr. G, but the Empire Morocco for Moors. But the problem is, Dr. G, if we're gonna unite, we have to unite and understand that we also have to pledge, pledge our allegiance to the state, and the state has to turn around and recognize us as Moroccans. We just can't run around saying, oh, I'm Moroccan. It doesn't work like that. We learned that in class one thirty-eight. I showed you two videos where people were trying to get recognized by a state. The Moors are no different. The Moors can run around saying they're Moors all they want to. That sounds good in theology, right, in abstract, but the question is, what state recognizes you as a Moor? Right? So we have to return to Morocco and let the state recognize us, Dr. G. So we're gonna unite, because I heard your call to action. Your call to action about how do we unite? We gotta talk jurisdiction, we gotta talk state, and you gotta also point out what we've done wrong in order for us to fix it, and then do it right, right? Okay, Dr. G. So as a moderator, here's what you gotta understand. Under United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, you've heard me in class one thirty-seven, one thirty-eight, I kept saying propaganda, 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 right? Why do you think I kept using that word? It's because it's a word that's used in international law, Dr. G. Right? So right up here, I got up here, what? United Nations Declaration on the Rights of Indigenous Peoples, okay? All right, so you come down, Dr. G, check this out. The reason why I use the word propaganda is because it's law. It's, it's a violation of law, Dr. G. Watch this. You come down to Article eight, Dr. G, I'm gonna show you law, and show you why for class one thirty-seven and one thirty-eight, why I kept calling out this word propaganda. You're gonna learn in just a moment, okay? All right, no, from the top, Article eight.
Article eight. One, indigenous peoples and individuals have the right not to be subjugated to force assimilation or destruction of their culture. Two, states shall provide effective mechanisms for prevention of and redress for.
Pause. Reset to a given.
States shall provide effective mechanisms for prevention of and redress for.
Okay, so Dr. G, check this out. Okay, so Article eight, section two says, states shall provide effective mechanisms for prevention. You see that? States shall provide effective mechanism for prevention of, right, and redress for. So the states shall provide effective mechanism for prevention. Right? Of, and then look at the second part, and redress. What does that mean? It's an obligation of the state. Right? The states to, to put in laws that prevent, prevent, right, a wrongful act. And after that says, and, redress. Meaning, then you gotta fix it. So you pointed out, prevented, then you gotta fix it, right? But fix what? Prevent what? That's the question. Prevent what? Okay, Dr. G, check it out. So Article eight, section two is talking about what? Propaganda. You see that, Dr. G? Propaganda. So it's the state's responsibility to prevent propaganda, and then provide redress. So when you hear me in class one thirty-seven and one thirty-eight, calling people out for this propaganda, which is misinformation and dis- disinformation. What's the difference between misinformation and disinformation? Well, misinformation, like, black people are all saying, I'm, I'm a proud black person, but they don't know that's misinformation, because they suffer from what? Cognitive dissonance. So they're telling everybody they're black, but they don't realize that that's propaganda. They don't know it. So therefore, that's just misinformation, because they don't know any better. But when you talk about dis, D I S, disinformation, that's deliberately, right? Deliberately telling people information that you already know is false. So propaganda really falls under disinformation, that's deliberate information you're giving people that undermines them, you see? So, let's take it from the top, Dr. G, so you can understand why I kept saying propaganda's gotta stop. This is international law we're reading, Dr. G. International law prevents, right, propaganda, and it's an obligation of states to stop it, prevent it, and then have redress, and that's what AIPAC Study Session is all about, to give education on how to stop the propaganda. All right? From the top, uh, no.
Article eight. One, indigenous peoples and, and individuals have the right not to be subjugated to force assimilation or destruction of their culture. Two, states shall provide effective mechanisms for prevention of and redress for. Eight, any action which has the aim or effect of depriving them of their integrity as distinct peoples or of their cultural values or ethnic identities. B, any action which has the aim or effect of dispossessing them and their lands, territories, or resources. C, any form of forced population transfer which has the aim or effect of violating or undermining any of their rights. D, any form of forced assimilation or integration. E, any form of propaganda designed to promote or incite racial or ethnic discrimination directed against them.
All right. So as you can see, Dr. G, it's the obligation of states. AIPAC, along with other Moroccan states and the Empire Morocco, has an obligation as a state to do what? States shall, section two, states shall provide effective mechanisms for prevention of and redress for. You go down here for what? Section E. Section two, section, uh, section E, subsection E. Any form of propaganda designed to promote or incite racial or ethnic discrimination directed against them. So what's happening right now, Dr. G? You, you, you got Moors saying we're Moors Americans, there's no such thing. That's propaganda. Yeah, black people say we're Indians, we're not Indians. We're Moroccans in Morocco, because United States of America knows we're all Moors, i.e. Moroccans. Even the Indian tribes know that we're Moors, they know it. This is why the United States has to do what? They, they have to bribe, bribe the Indian reservations to take two billion dollars. You gotta see what's happening. United States is trying to bribe the Indian nations to take the money in order to adopt the Moors again. They adopted the Moors in eighteen sixty-six. Now, the United States is trying to do it again in the twenty-first century, trying to get the Indian tribes to adopt Moors again. And this time, they're trying to bribe the nations again, because remember, in class one thirty-eight, remember, they had already given them three hundred thousand dollars to the Choctaw and Chickasaw. Now, they're talking about two billion. You see what the United States is doing? They're bribing them. Why is that? Because the United States understands international law. They know if they get the Moors under their own self-determination to say that they're what? Part of Cherokee Nation, under self-determination, the United States can say, well, we didn't have nothing to do with that, they, these Moors decided to be Cherokees. See, what the United States is doing, they real smooth. They, they trying to say, oh, we operated with a white glove. That's not true. That's propaganda. Keep in mind, the federal government came out and rejected this theory that black people can't be Indians. We learned that in class one thirty-seven, that the federal courts got involved and told the Cherokees, no, 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 you're gonna let these black people be Indians. So you see, the United States at first was hoping that the Indian nations was gonna let these black people come back, and the Indian nation said, no. So the United States federal courts turned around and said, yes, you shall let black people be Indians, even though we know they're being adopted. So the United States wants all the Moors who call themselves black to go and be a Cherokee citizen. So the United States is getting caught up with it. Now, at first, they were hoping it was gonna be a seamless move from being a Moor over here to be Cherokee. But now, they find out, they're gonna have to twist the arm of the Indian tribes and bribe them a little bit with a little extra money. They gotta grease the wheel, right? Gotta grease the wheel, grease the tracks. Like they say, money, you know, solves most problems, and they know the Cherokees love money. All the Indian tribe loves money. And this is why black people think they're gonna run over here to be Cherokees, because you think you're gonna get a welfare check. You think you're gonna run over here, and the Cherokee nation's gonna, first of all, adopt you, and then turn around and give you a hundred thousand dollar check every month, and you wouldn't have to do nothing to earn it? You don't have to do nothing for the Cherokee nation? They're not gonna put you to work? You ain't gonna have to go serve, do nothing? You ain't gotta rape no leaves? You ain't gotta serve in the government? You ain't gotta do nothing, they're just gonna give you a check, huh? You think that's the way it's gonna work, black America? That's not the way it works. See, it's not what the state can do for you, it's what you can do for the state. And this is why you run around wanting reparations, because you don't wanna do nothing to earn the money. You know what you can do to earn your money, black America? And Moors Americans, and any other non-degure you keep giving yourself? How about you help the Moors, i.e. the Moroccans, restore the government, because the United States of America owes taxes to the Empire Morocco, according to the Act of Saris of nineteen oh six. Chapter four. Go look it up. The United States of America owes taxes to the Moors for ever residual income. But you're not gonna get no reparations check for the United States of America to the Empire Morocco, because everybody come over here? Guess what? You're gonna get your behind to work. You're gonna have a job over here in Empire Morocco as an officer of the state. You don't have no skill set, no worries. What size do you wear? Small B and a large, because you're gonna put on a military uniform. You ain't got no skill set, you're still gonna get to work. Nobody's gonna come over here and just get a welfare check. You're gonna work. The empire has to rise up. You think it'll rise up by itself? And this is the problem with our people, you don't wanna put in the work. You just want somebody to hand you something. This is why they keep saying reparations, reparations. What is reparations? You gotta understand, reparations is a generic word. People think reparations only means compensation. Nah, reparations means to repair a wrong. Let me share something with the black people real quick. Listen to me, black America. I know you're not gonna agree with me, but I'm telling you the truth. You gotta go do the research and study international law, and you'll see what I'm talking about, what I'm about to tell you. Guess what? I hate to tell you, but black America, i.e. the Negroes, already received their reparations in nineteen sixty-four. Civil rights. Civil rights was passed by Lyndon Johnson. The reparations was the United States turning around and giving you quote-unquote equal rights. Equal rights to be what? A citizen of the United States to have access to the same rights as quote-unquote white America. So reparations, on that generic word, was saying, okay, let's give these quote-unquote black people equal rights, fair housing opportunity, fair job opportunity, the right to vote opportunities. That's called reparations. The United States was studying international law. They understood to help the black people to get in the status of what? Integration. It was integra- they literally called it integration. If you go to study international law, study United Nations Resolution fifteen forty-one of the year nineteen sixty-one, go to what's called Principle Number Six. And it's got three options for people who seeking rights. First option on the Principle Six was what? Emergence as a sovereign, independent state. The second option was what? Free association with an independent state, and the last one was what? Integration with an independent state. So guess what happened in the sixties? The United States said, oh, these black people are asking for integration rights. And guess what? They gave it to the black people. It was reparations to repair a wrong, and what was the wrong? That the black people quote-unquote didn't have equal rights under the law. So the United States got smart, and they passed legislation that repaired a wrong, because the black people felt as though they didn't have rights. So Lyndon Johnson turned around and gave you all kind of equal rights under civil rights. That's called reparations. But what you're asking for now is called compensation. You remember when Martin Luther King said, dang, man? Yeah, we, we got civil rights, but we didn't get no money. You remember, he turned around and said, I'm going to Washington to get that check. See, he was talking compensation, because he already know, knew that reparations took place. The United States repaired a wrong and made black people, I'm using the word black intentionally, because this is how people identify themselves. So black people got reparations nineteen sixty-four through nineteen sixty-eight. So you gotta understand, when, when Martin Luther King turned around and said, well, I'm going to Washington to get that check, what was he saying? He was saying compensation instead of reparations. Okay, I'm talking to you, black America, guess what? You want reparations? You want compensate, compensation? You want restitution? You want satisfaction? You want interest on your money? Guess what? The United States of America has already agreed to pay the Empire Morocco taxes forever. Oh, you gotta understand, your compensation and reparations come from the fact that the United States of America is paying taxation. You need to change your vernacular, it's called taxation. But first, you gotta deal with what first? Decolonization. You want taxation from the United States of America? Then you need decolonization. And decolonization comes from what's called naturalization. We as a people been naturalized by the United States of America. We've been colonized and naturalized. So in a decolonization, we need to get them under jurisdiction in the United States of America and return to Empire Morocco, which I'm standing on in Empire Morocco right now, it's called jurisdiction, it's in layers. You don't move away nowhere, you stay right where you are, it's jurisdiction. The United States of America owes taxation, right? As soon as we deal with what? Decolonization and naturalization. This is the, this is the answer to the test. All right? Okay, Dr. G. So we gotta stop the propaganda, Dr. G. What does propaganda mean? That we either, it's either misinformation or disinformation, but it's the obligation of the state to stop propaganda. So therefore, AIPAC Study Session is trying to give education that's a form of prevention. I'll say it again, education is a form of prevention, because I'm trying to warn the Moors and- I'll say it again, education is a form of prevention, because I'm trying to warn the Moors in advance, I'm trying to warn the, the black people in advance of giving them education. That's a form of prevention. However, if the education is not good enough for prevention, Dr. G, listen to me. If education doesn't work, then guess what's up next, Dr. G? The state has an obligation for redress to deal with what? To put in Moroccan laws. So if education don't work, then we have no choice but to put in legislation. Listen to me, Dr. G. The only way to prevent propaganda, right? Propaganda, if education don't work, then we need legislation. And once legislation is written, now we're facing what? Moroccan court of court, which is adjudication. So either Moors are gonna stop this propaganda, because I'm giving education, or the Moroccan states are gonna create legislation that's gonna find itself in the hands of the court of court to deal with adjudication. And that's the obligation of international law, Dr. G. That's not a threat. I'm talking to everybody. I, I, I'm just trying to share this information with you, Dr. G, so you can go back and tell everybody on your House of Re-Awakening Minds to let them know that the Declaration of the Restorative People, Article Eight, says that states have an obligation, all states have an obligation to prevent propaganda. Also to put in redress to stop propaganda. And ADPAC ain't no different, the other Moroccan states ain't no different, Dr. G. We're going to pass legislation and be dealt with adjudication if the propaganda doesn't stop, because international law says we have an obligation, Dr. G, to do what? Prevent. That's an international obligation. So ain't nothing personal, it's business. Let's move on, Dr. G. Today, I'm gonna share some information with you, uh, that you may or may not know, because Abdullah said that all the Moors were miseducated, so I'm gonna do my best to share some irredition, alright? Okay, Dr. G, what, what's the problem? You, you, you say you want us to unite, right? Okay, but what's the problem, Dr. G? The problem is we're rebels without a cause. The Moorish Americans are rebels without a cause. The black people are rebels without a cause. What do I mean? Well, first of all, let's read this about this. No, look, right here.
A rebel without a cause is a person who is extremely dissatisfied with the norms of society in general, including the government, but who doesn't fight for any particular cause.
Alright, so a rebel without a cause is a person who is extremely dissatisfied with the norms of society in general, including the government, but who doesn't fight for any particular cause. See, Moorish Americans and black people are rebels without a cause. What do I mean? We don't understand what the true problem is. We just throwing everything up against the wall to see what sticks. Black Lives Matter, right? The Poor People's Rally, got priests, got pastors out here talking about the Poor People's Rally. We got the Million Man March. Right? We, Moorish Americans, oh, we're Indians, oh, we're Hebrew Israelites. No, I'm just simply Baptist. We throwing everything at the wall to see what sticks. We're rebels without a cause. What do I mean a cause? What's the cause? Is the cause an effect? What is the cause and effect to our problem as a whole as quote-unquote copper colored people? We don't know what the true underlying root cause is, because we don't study international law. And what should we all understand that the cause is? The cause to our problem is what? Colonialism, colonization. So if the problem is truly colonization, then we supposed to be doing what? Decolonizing. So, Dr. G, when you say we're gonna unite, unite under what jurisdiction and under what cause? And the cause should be decolonization. That should be the order of the day, Dr. G. Decolonization gives us the cause and effect, because when we study decolonization, that comes with a set of instructions on how to achieve it based in well-settled principles of what? International law, right? Check it out, Dr. G. Okay. Let's read this about decolonization real quick, because this, this is what we should be talking about, Dr. G. Decolonization. Uh, no.
The United Nations played a key role in the wave of decolonization that changed the face of the planet. As a result of decolonization, many territories became independent and joined the United Nations. The year nineteen ninety marked the thirtieth anniversary of the Declaration on the Granting of Independence to colonial countries and peoples, also known as the nineteen sixty De- Declaration on Decolonization. In nineteen eighty-eight, the General Assembly adopted Resolution forty-three forty-seven, declaring the period nineteen ninety to two thousand, the International Decade, for the eradication of colonialism, and adopted a plan of action to accelerate the implementation of the nineteen sixty Declaration on Decolonization.
Alright, Dr. G. So the reality is we, we needed what? What, what should we be trying to do, Dr. G? You wanna unite, but we need to do what? Adopt. You see right here? We need to adopt a plan of action to accelerate the implementation of the nineteen sixty Declaration on Decolonization. So, Dr. G, the answer to the test for our liberty can be found in international law, because the United Nations wrote a resolution that's international law for people to decolonize. And there's a plan put in place. This is what the African states use to decolonize. Why aren't the black people studying what the Africans did to check procedural law boxes to decolonize? Dr. G, where is the action plan from your panelists of what we're going to do? First of all, we gotta understand what's the root problem, right? The problem is what? Colonialism. Okay, if it's colonialism, okay, how do we now fix that? Oh, it's called decolonization. Okay, how do we decolonize? Well, the United Nations already has a step-by-step-by-step-by-step-by-step-by-step action plan on how to decolonize, because they have already helped over eighty-plus territories to decolonize on planter. So the question, Dr. G, is why isn't anybody on your panel talking about decolonization and international law over and over and over again, day and night? Why aren't we talking about how to return to Empire Morocco, because decolonization means what? Okay, you see the word, Dr. G, look at this. Look at this, Dr. G. What is decolonization? Right? When the colonies, right? Cologne, right? Cologne, Christopher Columbus, whose last name was Cologne, right? We got, we got placed underneath the colonizers' tribes. The thirteen colonies were like tribes. And we got placed as a people underneath the colonies' tribes, so our nation, decolonization, deation, is about the nation. So our nation as Moors got put underneath the colonies under protection status. We got adopted, become the name of the colonizer. And who's the colonizer? Americans. The United States of America is a name in international law. The United States of America is a person in international law. So the person called the United States of America adopted us as Moroccans and turned us into what? Americans. And Americans adopted us, because the Americans was part of the colonies, and they made us Americans. We got adopted. So decolonization means you're getting away from what? Naturalization. How do we become Americans? Naturalization. So decolonization and naturalization go hand in hand, because colonization is about putting the Moors underneath the umbrella of the American state or American tribe. So we gotta get out that tribe and return back to our own tribe called the Empire of Morocco. And that's what decolonization is, it means to get out of that colony. What colony name? The United States of America. We gotta get out of the colony. That's what I mean to decolonize is to get out of the naturalization status of the United States of America's tribe, to get back to your tribe of the Empire Morocco. It's that simple. But there's a procedure involved with it. We, all we have to do is go to the United Nations and start understanding what is the procedure, right? It says right here, why, why are the grand sheiks reading this? The United Nations played a key role in the wave of decolonization. Why, why, why are the grand sheiks talking about that? Why aren't they saying the United Nations played a key role in the wave of decolonization? None of the grand sheiks teach about this. Nobody at the HBCU teaches about this. Nobody at the NAACP teaches about this. Nobody at BET teaches about this. Nobody at the Moore Science Temple teaches about this. Nobody at the Moore Civic Organization teaches about this. Nobody. Why is that? We know that Africa decolonized. Nobody studied what Africa did, and the only thing the Africans did, who could barely speak English, they just learned how to check boxes regarding the United Nations reforms. But we're gonna move forward. The Moroccan states of the Empire Morocco are gonna keep checking boxes. We're going to decolonize. That's the bottom line. This is what I'm trying to share with Dr. G. Everybody on your panel ain't talking about decolonization, and when they mention the word, they just gloss over it, Dr. G. They don't get into the step-by-step-by-step-by-step reforms and mechanisms on how to actually achieve it. You see what they said down here? They said what? On the eradication, eradication of colonialism and adopted a plan of action to accelerate the implementation of the nineteen sixty Declaration on Decolonization. What's the key word here? A plan, a plan of action. That's the key word, Dr. G. Does anybody on your panel have a plan of action? Well, guess what? If their plan of action is not to follow the instructions of the treaty to return to the Empire Morocco under statehood, then they got the wrong plan. That means they on a treadmill going nowhere fast. Alright, so I'm trying to help you to understand this, Dr. G. That way you can understand that the order of the day is the undoing of colonialism. You see? Okay, Dr. G, check this out. So on the Charter of the United Nations nineteen forty-five, Article seventy-three was about the Declaration Regarding Non-Self-Governing Territories. Under Article seventy-three, we were supposed to get back and declare the fact that we wanna do what? Self-government. And this is the problem. Our people don't wanna put together the government and self-government. That takes a lot of work. So what they do, they say, ah, forget all that, just send me a reparations check. This is what's happening. So we got, we have to self-government, or the United States is always gonna have us in a colonized status, because we're acquiescing to let them have jurisdiction over us and our own homeland. So we gotta understand this, Dr. G. We have to study. Barack Obama put his political career on the line to try to get the Moors to go back and read the Charter of the United Nations, especially Articles One, fifty-five, and seventy-three. These, these are critical articles. One, Section Two. Then Article fifty-five and Article seventy-three is what Barack Obama was trying to get us to go read, Dr. G. But the grand sheiks won't read it out loud, but I'll read it to you, Dr. G. I've done it before, alright? Okay, what's happening, Dr. G? In class one thirty-eight, I was breaking down this word called black, right? Black or Moor, right? To prove that the blacks and Negroes are actually Moors, right? We're Moors, Dr. G. We're not Indians. You look up these words in the Etymology Dictionary, it don't call us, it don't call Moors Indians ever. We're gonna talk about that some more today, Dr. G. I'm gonna keep proving that we're not Indians and we're not Moorish Americans. I'm gonna continue to prove this to you, Dr. G. I'm gonna keep, keep proving it, because you, you, you deserve to know the truth, Dr. G. If Abdullah said everybody was miseducated, then that means you also was miseducated, Dr. G. I'm trying to help here. At least I'm gonna give you some options. If you don't wanna pay this information no attention, that's okay, but at least you can't ever say that you didn't know, because nobody told you. My job is to give you options, Dr. G, to determine whether you wanna continue to be Moorish American, or do you wanna end up being a Cherokee, a, a, a tribe member along with Rare Bird, I guess, or do you wanna return to Empire Morocco? So I'm giving you options, that way you can study. Alright? Okay, check this out, Dr. G. So in class one thirty-eight, in the Etymology Dictionary, we was talking about Moors, right? But let's look up the definition of Morocco, okay? What, what does it say under Morocco? Okay, here we go. So Morocco, okay, just a moment. Let's go to Morocco. Okay, Morocco's a noun. Okay, no, from the top, Morocco.
Morocco, country in northwest Africa, from Italian, from Berber, Marrakech. Properly the name of the city of Marrakech, from Arabic, Maghrib al-Alqissa.
Alaa.
Alaa. Uh, extreme west. Compare French Morocco, German Morocco. In English, the first vowel has been altered, apparently by influence of Moor. Related. Moroccan.
Alright, so from the top, Morocco, in the Etymology Dictionary, Dr. G, country in northwest Africa, right? But they don't wanna say Empire Morocco. You gotta catch it, you gotta dodge the hijack. They didn't say Empire, they just said Morocco, because you gotta remember now, Morocco's an empire, okay? So it's country in northwest Africa, from Italian, from Berber Marrakech, properly the name of the city of Marrakech, from Arabic, Maghrib Alaa. Extreme west. Compare French Morocco, German Morocco. In English, the first vowel was, has been altered, apparently by influence, influence of Moor. Related. Moroccan. So Morocco, right, Morocco is from Moroccans. But look how they tie the word Moor to the word Morocco. You see there? So therefore, Dr. G, the Moors, right, the Moors, the word Moor is abbreviation of what, Dr. G? Morocco. And Moor is abbreviation of Moroccan. You see that? It's Etymology Dictionary, Dr. G. So don't let black, don't let black people try to convince other people that we're Indians. Did you ever see the word Indian in there, Dr. G? So Morocco is the home of Moroccans that are also called Moors. This is just too easy, Dr. G. The Moroccans are Moors. See that? So that's important to understand, Dr. G, alright? Tell Rare Bird to look that up. Let's continue. So what's the problem, Dr. G? Let, let's talk about problem, solution, right? Problem, solution, because I said what? The order of the day is what? Decolonization. But Dr. G, since this is my, my last class I'm gonna do on this topic of Indians, we have to talk about the problem and then the solution. How, how do we end up becoming colonized is the question, Dr. G? Right? If we became colonized, the answer, if, if the order of the day is decolonization, the question is, how do we end up colonized in the first place? How do we end up naturalized in the first place? You always have to go back to the origin to figure out somewhat what happened with the history and what laws was put in place, because law and history goes together, right? So we're gonna learn a little bit about that today, Dr. G, how do we end up being colonized and naturalized in the first place? And I'm gonna share some information with you today, Dr. G, that the, the grand sheiks never taught the Moors. And they should have taught the Moors this from day one coming through the door, alright? But I'll, I'll share this information with you today, Dr. G. Well, first of all, that's, what's the definition of naturalization? Right? What's that definition? Okay, let's look it up. Naturalization, right? Okay, from the top, Brother Joseph.
Naturalization, noun. Act of naturalizing, state of being naturalized, specifically in reference to the act of receiving an alien into the condition of a natural citizen. Fifteen seventies, from French naturalization, noun of action from naturalizer. See, naturalize.
Okay. So naturalizations are noun. Okay, from the top, take it, brother.
Naturalization. Noun. Act of naturalizing, state of being naturalized, specifically in reference to the act of receiving an alien into the condition of a natural citizen. Fifteen seventies, from French naturalization, noun of action from naturalizer. See, naturalize.
Okay, Dr. G. What are they saying here about naturalization? Noun, person, place, or theme, right? What is this about the naturalization? You see, Dr. G, you have to read this, because it's slightly coded. Alright, watch this. Okay, naturalization is an act of naturalizing, right? State of being naturalized. Right? Then it goes on and says, specifically in reference to the act of receiving an alien into the condition of a natural citizen. Fifteen seventies, from French. Fifteen seventies, from French naturalization. Noun of action from naturalizer. Okay. Do you see it, Dr. G? What happened? Alright, let's take a look at this, Dr. G. What do you mean by naturalization? Alright. First of all, they tell you the answer to the test right off the top. What does naturalization mean? It's an act. What are acts, Dr. G? Acts are legislation. So a state and its state government passed legislation that created an act. And the act was about naturalizing people. You see? But who did it? It says it was the state of being naturalized. So the people were what? Watch this, watch how I read it backwards, Dr. G. It's the naturalizing, what? It's the naturalizing of the being by the state. You see that? It was the naturalizing of the being by the state. You see that? What else about it, right? It was an act. It's a naturalizing act. The act is law. The states, you see that act, act is all about states. States create acts, which is law. They created a law. They created a naturalization act. So the naturalization act, everybody was naturalized, right? So the naturalized being, right? The human beings have been naturalized by the state, right? Because it was an act of the state. You see that, Dr. G? But what they had to do is first strip you of your nationality, right? This is why they call you what? An alien. See that? So in order to naturalize people, you have to turn them into aliens. What's alien mean? Alien means you don't have no homeland. You're ET. ET go home? ET wanted to go home, but he didn't know where David is home. Couldn't nobody help him go home. So they call him ET. They call him an alien. What does alien mean? You're stateless. So they put the Moors in a status of alien. That's the naturalization act of eighteen seventy. Said the Africans were now aliens, which means you don't have no homeland. So now what happens? You get what? You get what? Adopted by an act. An act adopted the aliens, right? But the act was written by the state to adopt aliens and give them what? Citizenship of the state. This is why Maxine Waters said everybody was adopted. This is why the, the Indian treaty said everybody was adopted. This is why the United States of America turned around and put all of us under a naturalization status of the Fourteenth Amendment as what? Adopted what? Aliens. Because they didn't want to say the nationality of Moroccan. So they lowered us down to aliens, i.e. denizens, denizens. And then brought us back up to a status of what? Citizen. So you went from denizen up to citizen under the naturalization act that changed the, the being by the state because the state created acts. Okay, what's the opposite of that? Decolonization. So we were naturalized under colonialism. Then that, well, we needed what in order to reverse it, Dr. G? It's called decolonization. What does decolonization do? Well, we as Moors have to reestablish our own state, right? That way we can create what? An act, right? That takes us out of the naturalized status and brings us back to our natural, natural status of being what? Moroccans. But only our state, a state can only reverse that. What the United States of America did, the Moroccan state can reverse it because the Moors can return back to the Empire of Morocco because Empire Morocco has an obligation to enact legislation, Moroccan law, that's that the Moors can come back home to Empire Morocco. So everything they did through their state, we have to do through our state to let the Moors come back in national. But Empire Morocco is national. That's natural. Over here is natural, right? Over here, natural, naturalized is decolonization. I mean, it's colonization. Over here, national is to be a national, like Moroccan national. Nationalized is for the state to recognize you, your, your original state. Natural, natural. N-A-T-U-R. Naturalized is an alien becoming adopted because the alien don't have no homeland. They're stateless. Right? So just like in Class one thirty-eight, we was watching a young lady who says she had Syria blood. She was born in Lebanon, but Brazil adopted her. But when Brazil brought her in, guess what status they brought her in as? Alien. Even though they opened the doors to Syrians to come into Brazil, but she knew she wasn't Syrian. But she was able to get into that wave and get through the door of Brazil. And Brazil recognized her, all of them as aliens, and then turned around and then what? They naturalized. Brazil, Brazil naturalized through the Brazilian state. They set forth an act that allowed the people from Syria, right? To become a natural citizen of Brazil. So they were naturalized under Brazil's laws. You see? The Empire Morocco got to do the same thing. We gotta let the Moors leave the United States of America and become what? National, not naturalized, but nationalized by the Empire Morocco because you're coming back home. When you go back home to your home state, you get national identification. When you're being adopted by a foreign state, it's naturalization. There's a difference in words. You understand what I'm saying? But who can only help the Moors? Only the state. You see? That's why they're using this word state. You gotta see what's happening here, Dr. G. You gotta read words backwards. So the, the naturalized being was naturalized by the state through an act. You see that? This is what I mean, Dr. G, when I say, well, Moors have to learn how to read. Read means forensics. You see, Dr. G, um, sometimes we have to read like a crossword puzzle. We gotta read from what? From what? Left to right, right, right to left, right, north to south, right, south to north, and then on a diagonal. We gotta read on a diagonal and then read it back this way. That's what reading is, right? It's forensics, right? To comprehend, use forensics, you gotta start circling words like it's a crossword puzzle, Dr. G. The answer to the test is right in front of our faces, but we can't see it. We gotta use discernment and, and use forensics, which means to really read and comprehend. But guess what? How would you ever understand what that says, Dr. G, if you're not being taught international law? Only way to understand what that was said is you have to, have to start studying about states, state rights. Moors are not taught about state rights. Moors are taught integration rights because Moors are trying to enforce the United States, UCCs and all their case laws, all that integration law. That's integration what Moorish Americans are doing. You understand what's happening? That's not international law reforms. Alright? Okay, listen, Dr. G. So we got naturalized, right? Now check it out. Because the Moors trying to figure out what happened to us. Okay. Here's the Fourteenth Amendment. Uh, Nova from the top.
The Constitution of the United States of America of seventeen eighty-one, eighty-nine, or the Constitution of the United States eighteen seventy-one as follows. Fourteenth Amendment of eighteen sixty-eight, Section one. All persons born or naturalized in the United States and subject to the jurisdiction thereof are citizens of the United States and of the state wherein they reside. No state shall make or enforce any law which shall abridge or the privileges or immunities of citizens of the United States, nor shall any state deprive any person of life, liberty, or property without due process of law, nor deny to any person within its jurisdiction the equal protection of the laws.
Alright, so what happened here, Dr. G, on the Fourteenth Amendment, right? It was about what? The Moors got naturalized. By who? The state. Naturalization means what? You were adopted. The Moors were adopted by the United States of America. Then the Moors were called what? American citizens after that. Before that, we were Moroccans. Then we got adopted under naturalization because of their legislation. You see? So under the Fourteenth Amendment, we're getting the answer to the test. Okay, what's the problem? Oh, we got naturalized in the jurisdiction. You see they said the word jurisdiction? In the jurisdiction of the United States of America. So we came under their jurisdiction as American citizens under naturalization. So we trying to figure out what's the problem? Black lives matter, screaming and hollering. What's the problem? It's naturalization. We were naturalized. They turned us into aliens that are from Moroccans to aliens to Americans. Therefore, we gotta go back to the beginning to understand we're Moroccans. Okay, how do we achieve to get back to a status of being Moroccan? It's called decolonization. Now you gotta check the box of statehood and then United Nations will show you how to do that. You can learn a lot more from the WRC, the WRC Regional Council. It's showing the Moors how to reestablish to get out of the naturalized status to come be nationalized by the Empire Morocco. Listen, Dr. G, I'm talking problem, right? We're gonna have to identify the problem so that way we know what the solution is. That way we can have what? A plan of action. You want people to unite? What's the plan of action? Because we're identifying the problem. What's the problem? Naturalization. Fourteenth Amendment. Right? Naturalization, which created what? Colonialism, right? Listen, Dr. G. What's the problem, Dr. G? Okay, we never understood the Constitution of the United States of America. There are three legal personalities in the Constitution of the United States of America of seventeen eighty-nine. And there are three legal personalities in the Constitution of the United States. Two separate constitutions, right? Constitution of the United States of America, seventeen eighty-nine. Constitution of the United States, eighteen seventy-one. But both have similar language, right? So check it out. Okay. From the top, Nova.
Uh, Constitution of the United States of seventeen eighty-nine or the United States of eighteen seventy-one as follows. Article three, Section two, Clause one. Clause one, cases or controversies. The judicial power shall extend to all cases in law and equity arising under this constitution, the laws of the United States and treaties made or which shall be made under their authority to all cases affecting ambassadors, other public ministers, and consuls, to all cases of admiralty and maritime jurisdiction, to controversies to which the United States shall be a party, to controversies between two or more states, between a state and citizens of another state, between citizens of different states, and between citizens of the same state claiming lands under grants of different states, and between a state or the citizens thereof and foreign states, citizens, or subjects.
Okay, Dr. G. So Article three, Section two, Clause one of the United States. The Moors never understood. Because the Moors understood, they would know that the controversy is between, right? See how many times it says between controversies? Between, right? Between who? Two or more states. So therefore, you jump down here, says also what? Between citizens or subjects. So the citizens or subjects, right? Citizens or subject. The citizen of the United States of America of what state? United States of America. That's the state. Okay, the subjects belong to what state? Empire Morocco. So Article three, Section two, Clause one was controversies between the United States of America and its citizens as well as the Empire Morocco and its nationals, i.e. its subjects. Back in the day, we were called subjects. We weren't called nationals or citizens. There was no word for, for the word citizen in Arabic. So all the Moors were just considered subjects. Alright? So that's in the Constitution, but what happened? Li- listen, Dr. G, we talking decolonization because we're naturalized, alright? So now we gotta find out, okay, what happened, Dr. G? How do we end up being colonized? How do we end up being naturalized? How did the Fourteenth Amendment, Amendment come to be in the first place? Right? We gotta talk about this, Dr. G, because if you're gonna bring your panel together, you gotta talk about, okay, what's the root cause? And the root cause is what? Colonialism. Okay, how do we colonize? Well, through col- colonialism and naturalization. Right? Okay, how do we fix it? It's decolonization. Well, how do we decolonize? Okay, you follow the instructions of international law in order to emerge as a sovereign independent state. That's how you decolonize. Okay? Listen, Dr. G. Okay, what I have up here? This is the Madrid Convention of July third, eighteen eighty. This is a Moors treaty. It's a multilateral treaty amongst twelve European states and the Empire of Morocco. And in this treaty, you wanna see that the Sultan agreed to this contract because treaties are contracts that are signed by several parties. The Sultan agreed for the Moors to be naturalized. This was eighteen eighty, okay? But this is a multilateral treaty. The Sultan had already, prior to eighteen eighty, had already signed several bilateral treaties. So the Sultan assigned bilateral treaties that allowed the Europeans to naturalize us, meaning adopt us. And the Sultan also agreed to a multilateral treaty such as this one treaty in Madrid that allow all the Europeans to naturalize the Moors. Okay? Okay, check it out, Dr. G. You gotta learn from this because if you're gonna bring the people together, you, you gotta understand what's happening, alright? So I already pointed out that who, who's, who's at least two of the parties? Okay, you got the United States of America and you got the Sultan of Morocco, but you also have other parties such as like, uh, Germany, Prussia. Uh, you got Hungary, uh, the Belgians. Uh, you got Denmark, Spain. Uh, you got France. Uh, you got the Queen of the United Kingdom of Great Britain. You got Ireland. You got Italy. Uh, uh, who else? Portugal, uh, Netherlands, et cetera. You see all those European states? So the Sultan is agreeing to let all these European states naturalize the Moors, meaning adopt the Moors and give the Moors the name of the European states wherever they're residing. So wherever the Moors, wherever the Moors were residing in the Empire Morocco, the Sultan gave all these European states the right to call the Moors under naturalization the name of the state. For example, the Moroccans in Morocco were called Americans because they were naturalized, become adopted Americans, but the Moors are actually Moroccans that are adopted as Americans. So they're Moroccans and adopted to be Americans. You gotta understand what I'm saying? So listen, Dr. G. Here's what happened to us, alright? This is the treaty, Dr. G, that for some reason, the grand sheiks won't read out loud. For some reason, the HBCU presidents won't read out loud. For some reason, the NAACP won't read this out loud. For some reason, they won't talk about this on BET or at the NOI. So I don't know what the problem is, but we gonna fix it no matter what. APAC Study Session is an educational platform. Here we go. So Nova from the top right here.
Having recognized the necessity of establishing on fixed and uniform basis the exercise of the right of protection in Morocco and of settling certain questions connected therewith, have appointed as their plenty of potentiliaries at this, at the conference assembled for that purpose at Madrid to with...
Pause. So right here, Dr. G, you see right here? The Sultan, the Sultan is giving the Europeans a right of protections in Morocco to put the Moors under protective status to be naturalized under European states, under their jurisdiction. Just like the Fourteenth Amendment said, the Moors were added, naturalized to come under jurisdiction of the United States of America. That's what this is saying. Becoming protected, right? It's a protections thing, right? Listen, you see the word protections? Okay, let's go back to the Fourteenth Amendment. Check this out, Dr. G. We gotta learn from this. Gotta learn from this. See? See right here, Fourteenth Amendment, under jurisdiction for what? For what? Protections. See that, Dr. G? Protection law, that's Fourteenth Amendment, right? They're getting all these words from treaties, Dr. G, you're gonna learn about that. Okay, you're gonna learn about this, alright? That's Fourteenth Amendment that came out in eighteen sixty-eight. But I'm gonna show you some other dates, things that happened prior to eighteen sixty-eight. Alright, Dr. G, I'm gonna show you what happened to the Moors prior to eighteen sixty-eight. But first, I have to fast forward you to eighteen eighty. Alright, I'm working it backwards, Dr. G, so I can show you the history. So now, Dr. G, you come down, okay? You come down. Okay, Nova, Article one.
Article one. The conditions under which protection may be conceded are those established in the British and Spanish treaties with the government of Morocco and in the convention made between that government, France and other powers in eighteen sixty-three with the modifications introduced by the present convention.
Alright, okay, so right here, Dr. G, Article one. Says the conditions under which protection may be conceded are those established in the British and Spanish treaties with the government of Morocco. So the Sultan, Dr. G, had already signed bilateral treaties with Great Britain and the Spanish government. Alright, we're gonna learn about when they did that. Then it continues on to say, right? Then it says, and in the convention made between the government, that government, right? That government who? The Sultan's government of Morocco, France and other powers in eighteen sixty-three. So the Sultan of Morocco had signed bilateral treaties with a lot of European states. Of Great Britain, Spain, France, right? We saw France, right? France, France and other powers. Who are powers? Other European states. And what year? Eighteen sixty-three, alright? So even though they're signing this treaty of Madrid in eighteen eighty, look what they're already saying off the top. There was a treaty signed in eighteen sixty-three regarding what? Protections in Morocco. Protecting who? Moors should be putting in a naturalization status to come under jurisdiction of European states. This the Sultan's agreeing to, alright? Pay attention, it's gonna make sense to you just a moment. Alright, Article two.
Article two. Foreign representatives at the head of a legation may select their interpreters and employees from among the subjects of Morocco or others. These protected persons shall be subject to no duty, in post or tax, whatever, other than those stipulated in Articles twelve and thirteen.
Alright, so right here, Dr. G, Article two. Foreign representatives at the head of a legation may select their interpreters and employees among the subjects of Morocco or others. These protected persons. So who's the protected persons then, Dr. G? You see who they now identify as protected persons is who? Subjects of Morocco, right? So the subjects of Morocco are the protected persons. That's very important to understand, Dr. G. Protected persons are the subjects of Morocco. Let's go back, let's go back to Article three, section two, clause one, right? Article three, section two, clause one of the United States Constitution that the United States scholars don't wanna tell the Moors that they are the subjects in this constitution. Article three, section two, clause one, the United States Constitution. Go to treaty Madrid eighteen eighty, it's talking about subjects, see? But the subjects of who? Morocco. Because Morocco's a separate state. So it's controversies between two or more states, you see? So controversy between United States of America and Empire Morocco regarding who? Subjects or citizens. Citizens in United States of America and controversies with subjects of Morocco. You see it's making sense to you now, Dr. G? Now check it out. So now, who is the Sultan? Who do these, these, uh, these subjects belong to? The Sultan, right? Subjects of Morocco, right? Are protected. Article three, okay, Nova.
Article three. Consuls, vice consuls or consular agents having a charge of a post and residing within the territory of the Sultan of Morocco shall be allowed to select but one interpreter, one soldier and two servants from among the subjects of the Sultan, unless they may require a native secretary. These protected persons shall in like manner be subject to no duty, in post or tax, whatever, other than those stipulated in Articles twelve and thirteen.
Alright, so who? Pay attention, Dr. G. Who are the protected persons, Dr. G? They are who? The subjects, they're the subjects, see? Subs, subjects, the subjects of the Sultan. You see that? So all the subjects belong to the Sultan, Dr. G. All the subjects. We were not called citizens or nationals back then, we were just strictly subjects, alright? So what happened? Okay, so these protected persons now, okay, you come down to Article fifteen. I'm gonna prove something to you, Dr. G, just be patient with me. Be patient with me, I'm gonna show you how you end up being colonized and naturalized, right? Article fifteen, keep in mind, we got naturalized, Fourteenth Amendment, right? Of eighteen sixty-eight, right? And now here comes the Sultan, now he's doing what? He's confirming it. In eighteen eighty, Dr. G, listen to me. We're gonna read that the Sultan of Morocco confirmed it. Confirmed what? The fact that Moors were being naturalized. We're working it backwards, Dr. G, I'm gonna show you some information. I'm working it backwards from eighteen eighty, I'm gonna work it back to the eighteen sixties, okay? So we're working backwards from eighteen eighty, I'm gonna work it back to the eighteen sixty. Be patient with me. Brodeur from the top.
Um, Article fifteen. Any subject of Morocco who has been naturalized in a foreign country and who shall return to Morocco so after having remained for a length of time equal to that which shall have been regularly necessary for him to obtain such naturalization, choose between entire submission to the laws of the empire and the obligation to quit Morocco unless it shall be proved that his naturalization in a foreign country was obtained with the consent of the government of Morocco. Foreign naturalization heretofore acquired by subjects of Morocco according to the rules established by the laws of each country shall be continued to them as regards all its effects without any restriction.
So the subjects, Dr. G? The subjects of his Sultan, all the subjects belong to the Sultan. So the subjects of Morocco, so therefore they're Moroccans if they're from Morocco, but all the Sultan's subjects have been what? Naturalized in a foreign country. So United States of America was one of the signatory powers. So we as the Moors over here in the far west got naturalized by the United States of America as a foreign country in Morocco. That must be understood. Now listen, watch this, Dr. G, I'm gonna tie it together, watch this. Told you I'm gonna work it from eighteen eighty back to the eighteen sixties. Now we go back to the Fourteenth Amendment, Dr. G. Fourteenth Amendment of eighteen sixty-eight said the Moors were what? Fourteenth Amendment said the Moors were what? Naturalized, see? Eighteen sixty-eight. Now you fast forward to eighteen eighty, what does the Sultan turn around and say? The Sultan says, okay, if the subjects of Morocco, i.e. the Moors, right? The Moors have been naturalized in a foreign country, it's eighteen eighty, right? Twelve years after the Fourteenth Amendment of eighteen sixty-eight. Twelve years later, the Sultan says, look, I'm gonna let you naturalize these Moors. I'm gonna confirm it, I'm gonna sign the contract of a treaty that's gonna give United States of America and the other European powers the right to naturalize the Moors, but also give these Moors, i.e. the subjects, a right to do what? Look what they do next. So once the Moors were naturalized in the Fourteenth Amendment in eighteen eighty, now the Sultan says, naturalized, Moors are naturalized in a foreign country? Now that's what they have to do, Dr. G. They have to do what? They shall return to Morocco so after having remained for a length of time equal to that which had been regularly necessary for him to obtain such naturalization, naturalization, the Moors have an obligation to what? Choose between entire submission to the laws of the empire. That was the obligation of Moors, Dr. G. To get out of a naturalization status of the United States of America, we have to return to the Empire of Morocco and pledge our allegiance to the entire submission to the laws, the laws, right? The laws of the empire, the empire of Morocco. You see that, Dr. G? This is treaty, treaty spring all the way. So even though the Sultan knew that the Moors got naturalized because of the Fourteenth Amendment, twelve years later, the Sultan says, okay, 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 you Europeans, I'm gonna let you naturalize the Moors, but the Moors have every right to pledge their allegiance back to the Empire of Morocco. But the Grand Sheiks aren't teaching this, Dr. G. The Grand Sheiks are literally telling the Moors they're what? Americans. This is the Grand Sheik said, oh, we're Americans. No, you're not. You're adopted and naturalized as Americans and the treaty say you're supposed to be turned back to Empire Morocco, Grand Sheiks. Listen, am I done? So this is what's happening in eighteen eighty, Dr. G, because of, right? Because of what? As a start, because of the Fourteenth Amendment of eighteen sixty-eight. The Sultan knew that the United States of America had put the Moors on a naturalization status. Okay, wait. Guess whose fault this is, Dr. G? It's the Sultan's fault. What happened, Dr. G? Okay, now we go back to the eighteen eighty treaty again, Dr. G. Watch this. Remember at the beginning, remember at the beginning? It said that the Sultan was recognizing and the Europeans were recognizing that in Article one, it says, "The conditions under which protection may be conceded are those established in the British and Spanish treaties with the government of Morocco" and in the convention made between that government of Morocco with France and other powers in eighteen sixty-three with the modifications introduced by the present convention. So the present convention eighteen eighty was going backwards, right? To confirm and condense all the bilateral treaties, right? So if the United States of America signed a bilateral treaty with the Empire Morocco and let's say Great Britain, France and Spain, all of them signed bilateral treaties with the Empire Morocco, what the Sultan says, okay, okay, timeout. Let's get all y'all together at one round table and let's condense all your bilateral treaties and put it into a multilateral treaty called a Treaty Madrid. That way I get all y'all signatures on one contract instead of having twelve different contracts. You understand what I'm saying, Dr. G? So this multilateral convention was giving the Europeans a right to naturalize the Moors, but all of them already had bilateral treaties. Now the Sultan says, put together a multilateral treaty under one contract, right? So watch this, Dr. G. See the footnotes? Look at these footnotes. Now you're gonna find out what happened with the civil war. Now you're gonna find out what happens with the Thirteenth Amendment that Taj Sri Bay has been teaching the Moors wrong, Dr. G. What Taj taught the Moors about the Thirteenth Amendment is miseducation. I'm gonna prove that, okay? Alright, uh, Brodeur from the top.
A U.S. note of February thirteenth nineteen fourteen, addressed to the French Ambassador at Washington, started in part. The provisions of the Convention of eighteen sixty-three appear to be substantially the same as the regulations relative to protection adopted by common consent by the Legation of France and the government of Morocco August nineteenth nineteen sixty-three, reprinted in treaties in force nineteen oh four at the end of the Madrid Convention. The British and Spanish treaties mentioned in Article one of the Madrid Convention are presumably the General Treaty of December ninth eighteen fifty-six between Great Britain and Morocco and the Treaty of Commerce and Navigation of November twentieth eighteen sixty-one between Spain and Morocco. Uh, for background, see, um, number two, Hathaway five fifty-four. For text of the eighteen sixty-three regulation, see page seventy-eight for the General Treaty of December ninth eighteen fifty-six between Great Britain and Morocco, see British and Foreign State Papers, volume forty-six, page one seventy-six for the Treaty of Commerce and Navigation of November twentieth eighteen sixty-one between Spain and Morocco, see a bed, volume fifty-three, page ten eighty-nine.
Okay, Dr. G, this is what Taj Sri Bay and the Grand Sheiks didn't understand. Watch this. You see these dates, Dr. G? Alright, look at this first date. See that date? December ninth eighteen fifty-six. What happened in December of eighteen fifty-six? Well, the Sultan signed a treaty with who? Great Britain, okay? So it says right here, it says... The British, right? The British. And Spanish treaties mentioned in Article one of the Madrid Convention are presumably the General Treaty of December ninth eighteen fifty-six between Great Britain and Morocco. You see, the Sultan had already signed a treaty in eighteen fifty-six that naturalized the Moors. It was a bilateral treaty, Dr. G, that gave Great Britain a right to turn the Moors, the Moroccans, into what? British citizens. They could no longer call themselves Moroccans, they had to call themselves British citizens. Then the Sultan turned around in eighteen sixty-one, follow me, Dr. G. In eighteen sixty-one, the Sultan turned around and signed a treaty with Spain. And that Spain naturalized the Moors, they called the Moroccan Moors, now they're called what? Spaniards. They were naturalized as Spaniards in eighteen sixty-one. So eighteen sixty-one is when Spain signed a treaty with the Sultan to naturalize the Moors. Then you fast forward to what date? Eighteen sixty-three. In eighteen sixty-three, right? Eighteen sixty-three is when now, the Sultan signed a treaty with France to what? Naturalize the Moors. And other, remember it said and other? Article one said France and other powers. So the Sultan was signing all these bilateral treaties. In eighteen sixty-three, the Sultan had signed a bilateral treaty with France to do what? Naturalize the Moors. So now the Moors are, instead of becoming Moroccan in Morocco, now they become what? French citizens. Okay, but look at these dates, Dr. G, this is what Taj Sri Bay don't understand. What happened first? Great Britain signed a treaty with the Sultan eighteen fifty-six. What happened in eighteen fifty-six? Dred Scott case. So the Dred Scott case happened eighteen fifty-six, United States of America said, we don't wanna recognize Moors as citizens of the United States of America. So they brought Dred Scott in and proved through the Supreme Court so they could have Supreme Court ruling that said these Moors cannot be Americans. This is what's happening in eighteen fifty-six. So they brought in Dred Scott because the United States of America knew that Great Britain was signing a bilateral treaty with the Sultan of Morocco to naturalize the Moors in Great Britain, they call them British citizens. So United States of America says, uh-uh, we ain't playing that game. We gonna put Dred Scott through the Supreme Court and have Supreme Court ruling that said the Dred Scots, i.e. Moors, can't be citizens of the United States of America. That happened in eighteen fifty-six. The ruling of Dred Scott came out in eighteen fifty-seven. Because of the Sultan, what the Sultan did with Great Britain, it caused the Supreme Court to have a case of Dred Scott. So now you fast forward, what happened in eighteen sixty-one? The Sultan signed a treaty with Spain to let the Moors become citizens of Spain and the United States of America gets upset because Lincoln has become president and they knew that Lincoln was a supporter of the Moors somewhere. So in eighteen sixty-one, what happens with the United States? Civil War. Why did the Civil War start, Dr. G? Because the Sultan was signing treaties with the Europeans. And the United States of America said, we don't wanna recognize Moors as citizens. So the Northerners wanted to recognize the Moors as citizens. The Southerners did not wanna recognize the Moors as citizens. They want to keep the Moors as what? Property, you see? So in eighteen sixty-one, because the Sultan signed a treaty with Spain, the Civil War starts in United States of America. Okay, fast forward, okay, listen, Dr. G. What happened in eighteen sixty-three, Dr. G? Now that France signed a treaty with the Sultan to naturalize the Moors, to turn the Moors into French citizens, eighteen sixty-three, what happened in the United States jurisdiction? Lincoln signs what? Emancipation Proclamation, eighteen sixty-three. Which coincides to say alignment as what was happening with France and other European states was freeing the Moors so the Moors could be free and then they turned them into what? Citizens. They turned the Moors into citizens of all the respective European states, eighteen sixty-three. That's why Lincoln signed the Emancipation Proclamation because of what the Sultan was doing with the other European states. You gotta see how these timelines are adding up, Dr. G. Eighteen fifty-six, right? Dred Scott. Eighteen sixty-one, Civil War. Eighteen sixty-three, Emancipation Proclamation. And all because these dates and deadlines all aligned with the Sultan signing treaties with the European states. So the question, okay, why was the United States of America trying to naturalize the Moors if they didn't technically have a treaty in the eighteen sixties that gave them permission to naturalize the Moors? Why was the northern states of the United States of America thinking they could do the same thing as Great Britain, Spain, France and the other European states? Why'd they think that? Okay, now, Dr. G, you gotta come down to Article seventeen. Okay, Article seventeen, okay? You gotta understand this... You gotta understand this, Dr. G, 'cause I know Taj Sri Bay didn't teach you this, okay? Article seventeen. Okay, uh. Brother Joseph?
Multilateral agreements from seventeen seventy-six through nineteen seventeen. Article seventeen. "The right to the treatment of the most favored nation is recognized by Morocco as belonging to all the powers represented at the Madrid Conference."
All right, so what happened, Dr. G? What happened is the Sultan said, okay, the right to the treatment of the most favored nation, right? Most favored nation clause is recognized by who? By Morocco. As belonging to all the powers, all the European powers represented at the Madrid Conference. So what's the most favored nation clause, Dr. G? That means that if the Sultan signed a treaty with Great Britain, then the United States of America have the right, right? Under what's called a privilege to say, hey, we get to treat these Moors the same way Great Britain gets to treat them. If the Sultan signed a treaty with France, it being a European power, then the United States of America say, well, Sultan, since you signed a treaty with France, the United States of America gets to use that same treaty under what, on, on the most favored nation clause to say, whatever you do with them, Sultan, with the European states, you gotta let us have the same rights or privileges. So the United States of America under the most favored nation clause under Article seventeen of the Treaty of Madrid gave the United States Northerners, the northern states, want to use Article seventeen, right? To talk about most favored nation. Now, keep in mind, the Treaty of Madrid came out in eighteen eighty. Civil War came out in what? Eighteen sixty-one. But if you go back to the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, Article twenty-four talks about the most favored nation clause. All right, I don't have that pulled up. But in seventeen eighty-seven and eighteen thirty-six, if you look at the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, Article twenty-four has the most favored nation clause. Right, Article twenty-four and Article seventeen. Now I think about it. Article seventeen and Article twenty-four, the Treaty of Peace and Friendship already disclosed the most favored nation clause of seventeen eighty-seven and eighteen thirty-six. So by the time eighteen sixty-eight came around, the United States of America, right? Wanted to use most favored nation clause to make the Moors citizens because the other European states was making them citizens because the Sultan had already recognized the fact that any treaty he signed with a European state such as France, then all the other European states have the same right or privilege to do the same thing to the Moors. You gotta understand what I'm saying, Dr. G? So on, on the Article fifteen, Dr. G, we just read it, right? We read it. Look what the United States was saying in the footnotes about the fact these Moors is all about the Moors what? Moroccan nationality. So the Treaty of Madrid was understanding that the Moroccan nationality of the Moors would now transfer over to what? Being naturalized to be now Americans, or French, or German, or Russian, or Italian, or Spaniard, or Portuguese. 'Cause all the Moors have Moroccan nationality, national, national, nationality, but then it became natural, naturalized as citizens of all the European states. But we all had Moroccan nationality before we became naturalized. But the Sultan signed the contract, Dr. G. Okay, the Sultan, let me scroll down. The Sultan signed the contract, Dr. G. You see, here's the signatory powers, Dr. G. Right? It was the United States, Germany, Belgium, Spain, France, okay? United Kingdom of Denmark, okay? Italy, Morocco, the Netherlands, Portugal, Sweden, Norway. So Morocco, the Empire Morocco, signed this contract. You hear the Moors Americans say, "Well, I didn't sign no contract. We, 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 we didn't sign no contract." That's not true, Moors Americans. The Sultan signed the contract on your behalf because all the subjects belong to the Sultan. This is why your questionnaire, your one-on-ones, I think it's what? Article thirty-one? It says, who's the ruler? The Sultan. That's in your one-on-one questions. And the Sultan, as the ruler, signed this contract and said that the European states could naturalize the Moors. So when you, when Taj Sri Bay turn around and say, "Well, the Thirteenth Amendment is unconstitutional." He kept running around saying, "The Thirteenth Amendment is unconstitutional." That's not true, Taj Sri Bay, because in the Article seventeen, and you go back and look at the Treaty of Peace and Friendship of seventeen eighty-seven and eighteen thirty-six, Article seventeen and twenty-four talked about the most favored nation clause. So since the United States of America knew that the Sultan was signing treaties in eighteen fifty-six and eighteen sixty-one and eighteen sixty-three, by the time the Thirteenth Amendment came out, right? In eighteen sixty-five, the Sultan had already allowed the United States of America to naturalize the Moors, to make them citizens of the United States of America 'cause the Sultan already signed treaty eighteen fifty-six, eighteen sixty-one, eighteen sixty-three, and then eighteen sixty-five, Thirteenth Amendment comes out. So Taj Sri Bay, you need to go back on the record and tell all the Moors you misunderstood because you're not reading the treaties, sir. This law and history go together. So you gotta understand that even on the Article seventeen of the Treaty of Madrid that you wanna read out loud, it still keeps talking about the most favored nation clause. And if the Empire Morocco, the Sultan, recognized, see right here it says, "Recognized." Recognized that these Europeans could continue to use the most favored nation clause to naturalize the Moors under the Thirteenth Amendment, Fourteenth Amendment, Fifteenth Amendment, and the Naturalization Act of eighteen seventy. The Sultan turned around in eighteen eighty and confirmed it, good brother. The Sultan of Morocco turned around and confirmed it, good brother, right here on the Article fifteen. Good brother Taj, you should read Article fifteen out loud to the Moors. So they'll see that the Sultan of Morocco authorized for the Moors to be naturalized in Morocco. So therefore, the Thirteenth Amendment is not unconstitutional, Taj Sri Bay. The Fourteenth Amendment is not unconstitutional, Grand Sheiks, 'cause all the Grand Sheiks run around saying, "Oh, we don't recognize the Thirteenth, Fourteenth, and Fifteenth Amendment." So what? What you say? The United States of America and the Sultan recognizes the Thirteenth, Fourteenth, and Fifteenth Amendment. The Sultan recognizes the Thirteenth, Fourteenth, and Fifteenth Amendment, including the Naturalization Act of eighteen seventy. The Sultan recognized all of that in eighteen eighty. Noam Droual Lee was born in eighteen eighty-six. As soon as Noam Droual Lee was born, Noam Droual Lee was born as a subject of Morocco and was naturalized by the United States of America the day he was born. Therefore, Noam Droual Lee had a responsibility to what? To return to Morocco and choose between entire submission to the laws of the empire and get back to the government of Morocco. Thus, the reason why Noam Droual Lee said he gonna leave the Europeans here long enough to teach us government so we can do what? Run government. We were supposed to learn how to run the government of Morocco to let the Moors return, so that they could do what? Return to Morocco. This is what Noam was trying to do. He was born into a naturalized status of the United States of America in eighteen eighty-six. I'm gonna say it again for the record. The Sultan of Morocco signed a contract in eighteen eighty that confirmed the Thirteenth, Fourteenth, and Fifteenth Amendment of the United States. So everything they did was constitutional once the Sultan recognized it. He said it right here in Article seventeen, right here, Taj Sri Bay. Read this out loud to the Moors. Right here, Article seventeen says, "The right to the treatment of most favored nation is recognized by Morocco, Empire Morocco, as belonging to all the European powers represented at the Madrid Convention." So Sultan recognized the Thirteenth, I'm gonna say it again, 'cause all the Moors are miseducated. The Sultan signed the contract for you, Moors. Stop telling everybody, "Oh, I didn't sign no contract," right? If, if, if I didn't sign no contract, then there's no contest. No contract, no contest, right? And the Moors run around saying to the United States of America, "Are you the holder in due course? Are you the holder in due course?" You know what the United States of America doing? They laughing their behinds off at you. You don't even realize the Sultan let the United States of America naturalize you in a treaty and treaty supreme law of the land. Taj Sri Bay, you got something to say to the Moors, sir. You got the course correct and tell them you misunderstood the Thirteenth Amendment. All the Grand Sheiks of the, of the temples, you gotta stop lying to the Moors and tell them that you don't recognize the Thirteenth, Fourteenth, and Fifteenth Amendment. Who the hell are you when the Sultan recognized it? You gotta stop this propaganda. Just gotta stop it. Okay, Dr. G, what's happening? I, I'm gonna give you some revision, Dr. G. Here we go. All right, so you see right here I got a map. Okay? So once the Sultan of Morocco, who was sitting at the capital at the time, right, at the Empire Morocco, he was sitting here as Fes, right? He signed a treaty that let all these European states naturalize the Moors. Right, under the most favored nation clause, the Sultan was signing bilateral and multilateral treaties with all these European states. Including who? The United States of America, over here in the most extreme west. The Sultan signed the contract that let the United States of America naturalize the Moors to turn them into Americans. The Sultan signed the Treaty of eighteen eighty and let Great Britain, right? Great Britain. Here's Great Britain, right? Right here, this small island. But they controlled all this, this land under colonialism, including Canada, 'cause they weren't no Canada then. Canada's really Great Britain, but Canada is in a free association with an independent state called Great Britain. Right? So all this land is Morocco, and the Sultan let the Europeans naturalize the Moors under treaty rights. Listen, what happened? Let's look at the timeline. We gotta go through this timeline because the Moors have been miseducated. Bang, bang. Okay, uh, Brother Dre, from the top.
Timeline. The Sultan granted the European states, the European states a treaty right to naturalize the Moors subjects. Uh, is, for example, the Moroccan subjects throughout the Empire Morocco starting in eighteen fifty-six. One, the Sultan of Morocco recognized thirteen colonies in December seventeen seventy-seven. Two, the Sultan commissioned France to be the U, uh, United States of America consul in February seventeen seventy-eight. Three, the Sultan and the Americans signed the Treaty of Peace and Friendship of seventeen eighty-seven. Four, the Sultan renewed the Treaty of Peace and Friendship in eighteen thirty-six. Five, the Sultan signed a Moors Naturalization Treaty with Great Britain in eighteen fifty-six. Um, also, there are now Abraham Lincoln representing a Portuguese Moor in eighteen fifty-five. Um, the Dred Scott case was accepted by the United States, uh, United States of America Supreme Court in eighteen fifty-six. Number six, the Sultan signed a Moors Naturalization Treaty with Spain in eighteen sixty-one. Uh, Lincoln took his oath as the President of the United States of America on March fourth eighteen sixty-one. Um, the Civil War began on April twelfth eighteen sixty-one. Number seven, the Sultan signed a Moors Multilateral Naturalization Treaty in eighteen sixty-three. Um, Lincoln declared the Emancipation Proclamation in eighteen sixty-three. Lincoln signed the Thirteenth Amendment on February first eighteen sixty-five. The Civil War ended on April ninth eighteen sixty-five, and Lincoln was assassinated on April fourteenth eighteen sixty-five. Number eight, the five civilized Indian tribes of Oklahoma signed a treaty with the USA on July nineteenth eighteen sixty-six, which recognized the prior slaves, i.e. the freedmen, um, or Moors, be adopted citizens of Indian tribes. Number nine, the United States of America signed the Fourteenth Amendment to their Constitution in eighteen sixty-eight, which recognized freedmen, i.e. the Moors, to be adopted naturalized citizens of the, of the USA. Ten, the USA signed the Fifteenth Amendment to their Constitution in eighteen seventy, which recognized the freedmen's rights to vote as citizens of the USA. Number twelve, the United States of America and its Naturalization Legislative Act of eighteen seventy recognized the African aliens as citizens of the USA. Number eleven, the Sultan signed a multilateral Treaty of Madrid of eighteen eighty to give the USA the right to naturalize the Moors. The Madrid Treaty also enshrined a treaty right for the Moors to consent back to the Empire of Morocco. Twelve, Sultan signed a multilateral treaty for the Act of Agus Erres of nineteen oh six to reaffirm the external sovereignty and independence of the Empire of Morocco and His Majesty the Sultan, and to reinstate the Moors government with its sovereign, uh, police authority to collect taxes and to enforce Moroccan treaties, Moroccan laws, and Moroccan regulations by its Moors Consular Courts throughout the Moors Empire. Thirteen, the Sultan signed the Treaty of Fes of nineteen twelve, which gave the Republic of France the authority to oversee the Moroccan subjects and the empire along with the Moors government on behalf of the Sultan of Morocco.
Et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, and it kept on going. Okay? So what's happening here, Dr. G? You, you gotta see that the Sultan started signing treaties, right? Started signing, keep in mind, in seventeen eighty-seven, right, seventeen eighty-seven, and eighteen thirty-six, the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, right, the Sultan renewed the Treaty of Peace and Friendship eighteen thirty-six, right, that was from the seventeen eighty-seven treaty. But both of those treaties talked about the most favored nation clause. I believe it was Article seventeen and twenty-four. All right, so that was already well-settled principles in the treaty, right? So then you turn around, the Sultan signed a Moors, the Sultan signed a Moors Naturalization Treaty with Britain in eighteen fifty-six. This is what started the naturalization of Moors. The Sultan started this naturalization stuff. This is what the Moors gotta understand. All right, so what happened? Then Lincoln turns around and represents a Portuguese Moor in eighteen fifty-five by the name of who? William Dungy. But when he did that, don't think that the southern states and the northern states didn't find out Abraham was representing what? Moors. He represented William Dungy as a Portuguese Moor in eighteen fifty-five. So in eighteen fifty-five, so what happened? Next following year, the Dred Scott case comes out. Right? Because of what? Why did the Dred Scott case come out? Because of the, the Treaty, Section five, Section five, the Sultan signed a Moors Naturalization Treaty with Great Britain eighteen fifty-six. Right? So what happens next? All of a sudden now, Dred Scott case comes out, right, eighteen fifty-six, same year. All because the Sultan had signed a treaty with Great Britain. So then, so the Supreme Court wanted to make sure Dread, the Dred Scots, plural, could not be recognized as citizens of the United States of America. But the northern states said, "No, we got a right under the most favored nation clause to recognize the Dred Scots as citizens of the United States because the United States had a right under a privilege to enforce the same type of treaty language that Great Britain had signed with the Sultan." So you gotta understand, what happened next? Okay, Dred Scott, um, judgment comes out eighteen fifty-seven saying that who? Negroes can't be citizens. But who are negroes? In Edomagie Dictionary says, who are the negroes? Moors. Edomagie Dictionary, look at the word Moor, it says blacks and negroes. Are who? Moors. Dred Scott was listed as what? Negro, i.e. Moor. So the Supreme Court, which was controlled by who? The southern states. Wanted, didn't want Dred Scott to have the citizenship of the United States of America. So they came out court ruling against Justice Tatum, Otani, right? You gotta see what's happening. Everything that's happened in the United States territory is because of the Sultan signing treaties with all the Europeans. This is what's happened, uh, Dr. G. So check it out. So then what happens next? Uh. Lincoln, right? Lincoln, Lincoln took his oath as the President of the United States of America on March fourth eighteen sixty-one. What happens? Civil War breaks out. But why did it break out? Oh, because the Sultan, on Section six, the Sultan signed a Moors Naturalization Act treaty with Spain in eighteen sixty-one that allows Spain to naturalize the Moors. So the northern states of the United States of America said, "Okay, we certainly got a right to make these Moors citizens because the Sultan just signed a treaty with Great Britain and Spain." So next thing you know, Civil War breaks out because Lincoln becomes the President, and they know Lincoln what? He, he had a little bit of favoritism for who? Moors. This is why they put Lincoln on the one cent. The, the penny is what? Copper color. That's why the penny is copper color and all the other, uh, uh, loose change is silver. They put Lincoln on the penny to remind all of the, the United States of America and its authority and the bankers that Lincoln is the reason for the Civil War. Because Lincoln turned around and made the Moors citizens and the southern states didn't want that. So Lincoln gets credit, he gets credit for helping the Moors get out of a slave status in the South, but at the same time, he gets criticized because he actually helped the Moors. Right? So he gets credit and criticism, so they put him on the one penny, that's a brown penny, to remind themselves, right, that Lincoln helped the Moors, okay? So then what happens? Okay, you gotta understand this, Dr. G. The Sultan, Section Seven, the Sultan signed a Moors Multilateral or Bilateral Treaty in eighteen sixty, sixty-three with who? France and other states. Go back to Treaty of Madrid, Article One, said that France signed a treaty in eighteen sixty-three along with other European states. So that's what happened in eighteen sixty-three. So then Lincoln comes out, Emancipation Proclamation eighteen sixty-three, because the Sultan just signed a treaty with France and other European states. So then Lincoln turns around, so Lincoln signs what next? Lincoln signed the Thirteenth Amendment on February first eighteen sixty-five. Why? Because the Sultan has signed all these treaties of eighteen fifty-six, eighteen sixty-one, and eighteen sixty-three, so Lincoln turns around eighteen sixty-five, Thirteenth Amendment, made the Moors what? Citizens, because all the other European states was doing it. But Tashi Bay ran around to all the Moors, the Thirteenth Amendment was unconstitutional. It wasn't unconstitutional. The United States of America have a right to do it under a privileged status because the Sultan was letting other European states turn the Moors into citizens. So what happens next? So, Lincoln signed the Thirteenth Amendment on February first eighteen sixty-five. Next, Civil War ended on April ninth eighteen sixty-five. Then Lincoln was assassinated on April fourteenth eighteen sixty-five. Number eight, the five civilized Indian tribes of Oklahoma signed a treaty with the United States of America on July nineteenth eighteen sixty-six, one year after they assassinated Lincoln. Now they trying to say, "No, no, let's not make these Moors Americans, push them over there and tell them to be Indians." You see what's happening? One year after they assassinated Lincoln, right, Lincoln was assassinated April fourteenth eighteen sixty-five, and by July nineteenth eighteen sixty-six, they trying to say, "Let these Moors be adopted citizens of the Indian tribe." You see what they doing? They didn't wanna make them Moors citizens, the southern states didn't wanna do that. The southern state on a trail of tears, was trying to make these Moors be Cherokee Nation and Creek Nation and Seminole Nation and Choctaw Nation and Chickasaw Nation citizens, but they were being adopted. You see what's happening? All this is because of the Sultan signing these treaties, but the Moors don't wanna tell you this history, Dr. G. Alright, what happened? Number nine, the United States of America signed the Fourteenth Amendment to their Constitution, they added to their Constitution in eighteen sixty-eight, which recognized freedmen, i.e. Moors, to be what? Adopted, naturalized citizens of the United States of America. That's what the Fourteenth Amendment did. That's what it did. Naturalized, so they wanted to make sure they put the word "naturalized" in the Constitution itself. So once they did that eighteen sixty-eight, what'd they do two years later? Now they gonna enact what? Legislation to support the Constitution. So you got Constitution, then they wrote legislation, right? Constitution Amendment, Fourteenth Amendment, right after that, Second Legislation eighteen seventy, right? Check it out. Number twelve, the United States of America in, in its Naturalization Legislative Act of eighteen seventy, recognized the African aliens as citizens of the United States of America. So in eighteen seventy, they come up with the Fifteenth Amendment to change the Constitution. And in the same year, they now have what? Legislation, because the Constitution was changed, now they had to create legislation to recognize the Moors as being naturalized citizens of the United States, but they called them what? Aliens. What does alien mean? You've been stripped of your nationality of being Moroccan, and now you're being adopted by some foreign country. That's Article fifteen, Treaty of Madrid. You was naturalized by a foreign country. What does naturalized mean? Adopted. But before they could adopt you, they had to turn you into an alien. See, African aliens were turned into citizens of the United States of America. Well, why the United States get away with that? Because the Sultan signed treaties with the European states. The entire Civil War is because of the Sultan signing treaties with the European states. And they knew Lincoln and the northern states was gonna make the Moors citizens. Because of Most Favorite Nation Clause of the Treaty of Peace and Friendship, Article seventeen and twenty-four. And because the Sultan was signing bilateral treaties with Great Britain eighteen fifty-six, Spain eighteen sixty-one, France and other European powers eighteen sixty-three, the Thirteenth Amendment signed eighteen sixty-five, Fourteenth Amendment comes out eighteen sixty-eight, Naturalization Act comes out eighteen seventy, Treaty of Madrid comes out eighteen eighty. And the Sultan turns around and confirms the naturalization of Moors. However, what else did the Sultan confirm in Article fifteen of the Treaty of Madrid? Listen, what else did he confirm? Article fifteen confirmed what? Even though the Sultan confirmed that the Europeans could naturalize the Moors, he turned around and put a provision in the treaty that the Moors had human right, a peripery right, a fixed and uniform basis right to do what? It says, "Any subject of Morocco who has been naturalized in the United States of America and who shall return to Morocco, Empire Morocco, shall after having remained for a length of time equal to that which shall have been readily necessary for him to obtain such naturalization under the Fourteenth Amendment, shall choose between a time submission to the laws of the Empire and the obligation to quit Morocco unless it shall be proved that his naturalization in the United States of America, right, in a foreign country, United States of America, was obtained with the consent of the government of Morocco." So second paragraph says what? Foreign naturalization. Here to four, what does here to four mean? After this date, what date? July third eighteen eighty, after this date, the July third eighteen eighty, these Moors after this date are now what? Citizens of the United States of America. After July third eighteen eighty, the Sultan confirmed that the Moors are now citizens of the United States of America. So it says what? Foreign naturalization heretofore acquired by subjects of Morocco according to the rules established by the law of each country such as the United States of America shall be contained to the United States of America as regards all its effects without any restrictions. So the Moors came under the civil and criminal jurisdiction of the United States of America as what? American citizens and not Moroccans anymore. You see what's happening? You gotta learn from this. Alright, Dr. G. I'm gonna go through this quickly, Dr. G, because I know I've had you through here full bar. What do I have up here? Office of History. Office of History, Dr. G. I'm gonna go through this quickly, Dr. G, and I'm gonna wrap it up, I promise. This is Office of History, you can find this on Google, right? What, what is the title, uh, Brother, Brother Dre?
Uh, Foreign Relations of the United States Diplomatic Papers nineteen thirty-nine, The Far East, The Near East, and Africa. Uh, is that volume five? Four, four, excuse me. Um, Secretary of State to the French Ambassador, Saint Quentin, Washington, January twenty-first nineteen thirty-nine. Um, Excellency, Your Excellency will recall that in my note of August thirt, twenty-third nineteen thirty-eight, the intention of this government was expressed to submit to your government the drafts of a Capitulations Convention and a Treaty of Establishment, Commerce, and Navigation concerning the French Zone of the Cherevian Empire.
Pause, so what's happening in nineteen thirty-nine? France was controlling Empire Morocco because of the Treaty of Fes of nineteen twelve. So now they sending correspondence to the United States to talk about who? Moors. This is nineteen thirty-nine. Alright, nineteen thirty-nine, they talking about Moors. Continue, Brother.
In now transmitting drafts of those instruments, it has been considered useful with the view to facilitate examination of the proposed text to include certain comments concerning their respective provisions. These comments are given below, beginning with the, um, certain examination of the provisions of each article of the proposed Capitulations Convention and continuing with the general examination of the proposed Treaty of Establishment, Commerce, and Navigation. Capitulations Convention, Article One. Article One is more detailed in character than the corresponding article of the British Convention. The first paragraph is identical, mutual, uh, mutatis, mutand, uh, mutandis, with the single paragraph of the British Convention, but the article includes besides a subsection to paragraph, uh, to, uh, paragraph two, which corresponds to paragraph four of the protocol annexed to the British Convention and subsection of paragraph two, which corresponds to paragraph three of Article sixteen of that convention. It will be noted that Article fifteen of the Convention of Madrid eighteen eighty relates to the change of nationality by naturalization.
Pause. Read that sentence again.
It will be noted that Article fifteen of the Convention of Madrid of eighteen eighty relates to the change of nationality by naturalization.
Read it again.
It will be noted that Article fifteen of the Convention of Madrid of eighteen eighty relates to the change of nationality by naturalization.
Read it again.
It will be noted that Article fifteen of the Convention of Madrid, uh, Convention of Madrid of eighteen eighty relates to the change of nationality by naturalization.
Pause. So this is France talking to the United States of America. About the treaty retrieved, Article fifteen changed the nationality of the Moroccans to whatever nationality of the respective European states that the Sultan allowed the Moors to be naturalized, to become citizens of European states. However, the Sultan also in Article fifteen said the Moors could always come back to the jurisdiction of the Empire Morocco that you're standing on at this time. If you can hear my voice and you can see my face, you are standing on the Empire Morocco. So don't ask, "Where's the Empire Morocco?" You're standing on it. I don't care where you are, you're standing on it. You must understand, as I start to close out, that the Treaty of Madrid, Article fifteen, paragraph one, served two purposes. One, it confirmed that the Sultan allowed the Europeans to naturalize the Moors. In order to understand that Fourteenth Amendment, the Thirteenth Amendment, Fourteenth Amendment, Fifteenth Amendment of the United States was confirmed by the Sultan. And the second thing that Article fifteen of Treaty of Madrid did was also what? It allowed and confirmed on a fixed and uniform basis that the Moors could also return back to Morocco and pledge their allegiance to the Empire Morocco. But what's the problem? As we start to close out, the problem is this. After March second nineteen fifty-six, the Sultan stepped down and left the Empire State void of a government. So the Moors could not fulfill the obligations of Article fifteen, because there was no government to return to. So the United States knew this. France knew this. All the European states knew that there was no government for the Moors to return to of the Empire, not the Kingdom of Morocco, but the Empire. So we as Moors, after March second nineteen fifty-six, had an obligation to do what? Emerge as a sovereign independent state. And put the three branches of government back together again, right? Executive branch, legislative branch, and judicial branch to start to govern the Empire Morocco again, so that all the Moors that's been naturalized in the United States of America could return to Morocco's jurisdiction. Now, can we return as Moors Americans? No, ain't no such thing as Moors Americans. You either Moroccan or you're not. This is a hybrid. Ain't no such thing as Moors Americans. Are we Indians? No. Did you see anything in the treaties about the word "Indian" regarding the Sultan and the European states? No. We are Moroccans in Morocco, it's been naturalized by a foreign country called the United States of America, we gotta return back to the Empire, back to the Empire Morocco, and this is what Dr. G gotta understand, right? So as I start to close out, Dr. G, last thing I'm gonna say to you is this. When you put together your keynote speakers, Tashri Bay, Red Bird, Abdullah, Lamont, and Yakuba, ask them are they gonna follow the instructions of the treaties? That say we have to decolonize because we've been naturalized by a foreign country, and the Sultan gave us an absolute right, a treaty right, a peripery right, a human right, to come back and restore the Empire Morocco government, so the Moors have our government to come back to under decolonization. This is what we gotta understand, Dr. G. Hopefully you learned something, alright? We'll talk about this a little bit more after April twenty-eighth. I am with that. Islam.